Okay, good morning, everybody. Today is Thursday, June 27, 2024. We're here for a work session. And as always, could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Matt Charters, would you mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, I have a couple of quick notes to go through here. On a sad note, the town of Riverhead lost a couple of patriarchs, matriarchs, I'm sorry, in the town. Pat Stark, who's the former wife of, the wife of former town supervisor Jim Stark. Her work in town, her charitable work that she did her whole life and the love for her town was, will certainly be missed. So our thoughts and prayers to her family. And Shirley Simon Smith also passed away. And she was another very charitable person, very active in the community. And these are people that really helped mold Riverhead into the, to the place we are today. And we're going to miss them, and our thoughts and prayers to all their families. On a less depressing note, we have one well in the water district. The actual head fell off 700 feet deep in the ground. And our incredible water department staff is actually trying to retrieve this head and get it back up. But so that means we're down one well, which is a kind of big to do. So what we're asking just voluntarily for people to consider odd and even water days for water conservation. It will help take some of the pressure off the well that is down until we get it back up running again. So just voluntarily, if you could, odd and even, if your house number is an even number, you water on even days. And if it's an odd number, you water on the odd days. And again, voluntary, it's not mandatory, but we're just asking for a little assistance here because the weather has been quite warm and the water usage has been quite high. So until we get some rain to cool things off a little bit with the water district, just lay off everyday watering and maybe consider odd even. Okay? All right, let's get, oh, go ahead, Bob.
So just one note on Shirley Simon. What, Simon?
Shirley Simon Smith.
Shirley Smith Simon.
Shirley Smith Simon.
Okay. She's an original Griffin. She grew up in the Griffin house that was built on this property. That's it. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, unless you live in a cave without electricity. Last Friday, we received such tremendous news of receiving a $24.12 million grant to help with the downtown revitalization. This was from, at the federal level through the Department of Transportation. And the work that Senator Schumer and Senator Gillibrand and Congressman LaLota put in to support this bill, and it passed, and it included our $24 million is incredible. It's incredible to the downtown and our CDA worked their, worked themselves to their bones to get this done. It's been five years in the making, and it finally happened, and it's going to help us tremendously with the parking garage. It's going to help us with flood mitigation on the back river. And it's also going to help with streetscaping to all, which is all part of the plan of the revitalization of downtown. So congratulations to the CDA, and, and we are ecstatic about that. So, all right, moving on to open session. We have matters surrounding possible establishment of Emerging Technology Committee. And this is very interesting. And Bob Kern, would you take?
Sure, I'm going to ask Carl Mills, Amy Angle, Jeff Seaman, Frank Mancini, Danielle, and Greg Burman to come up. Is Greg here? Oh, yeah, there he is. And I know Carl, you're on a tight schedule, so, you know, can you speak first?
Is this considered the smartest group of individuals in the town of Riverhead with the technology? Can they fix our phones before they go?
I am definitely lowering the IQ.
So Carl Mills is representing Stony Brook University. Amy Angle is representing Brookhaven National Labs. Augie, who couldn't be here, is representing Cornell at Crawford Extension and University. Jeff Seaman, who's, who does our secret work and our environmental guy, and Frank Mancini, who used to work at Brookhaven National Lab, and Greg Burman, which I think is, who is very admirable to being on this to, to see what's happening. So Carl, I'm going to let you speak first because you are on a tight schedule.
Sure. Carl Mills, Assistant Vice President for Government Relations. I handle state and local government affairs for the university, both of our campuses on Southampton and our entire medical system. So spent a lot of time here on the East End. Very appreciative to be here. Just a few of the initiatives I know that we're working, oh, we also co-manage the Brookhaven National Lab, so we have a significant oversight and info with what goes on at BNL. We have a number of joint faculty that are both at Stony Brook and at BNL and really work in partnership on a lot of those. But just some of the things that come top of mind, we're currently building a quantum internet test bed, which would be the largest internet, quantum internet test bed in the United States housed at Stony Brook University in partnership with BNL, go from New York City all the way out to Riverhead. We got grants from the federal and state government to help support that, the Governor's Long Island Investment Fund. We have the New York Climate Exchange, which is a massive project that we, as the lead applicant, and BNL is obviously involved as well, but a number of international companies, universities, really to deal with mitigating climate change on Governor's Island and New York City. But that applies across our enterprise, so coastal resiliency, workforce development, pretty much anything green climate jobs related is something that we're working on. We're also doing energy and battery storage, which is at our AirTech and Seawood facilities, which is our advanced energy centers on Long, on the university side. And really, if there's an area of interest that the committee has, it's likely that Stony Brook is involved in some way. But those are kind of just top of mind, just some of the things that we're working on.
Thank you, Carl. Amy?
What he said.
Oh, no, you're not.
I'm Amy Angle. I'm the manager of Community and Environmental Engagement from Brookhaven National Lab. As Carl said, we are working on a lot of things together, and I was going to mention the Climate Exchange and Quantum Network because those are relevant to this committee. We also, we do a lot with not just quantum, we have our computer science initiative, we do a lot with artificial intelligence, machine learning. We have our interdisciplinary science research that we are researching on batteries, battery storage, how to make them safer, more stable, longer lasting, smaller, bigger, whatever we need. So we have that expertise. We have our national synchrotron light source, so that provides a lot of other research into all different things, even though it's not particularly relevant for this committee. The light source is the facility that was used by Pfizer and Moderna when they were developing the COVID vaccine. So there's a ton of potential at the light source for whatever research is needed. And I can tap those scientists if we need presentations. We have our Center for Functional Nano Materials, our Relativistic Heavy Ion Collider, and we have the scientists associated with those. And we, I don't know if you know, but we are, we've been tapped by the federal government to develop an electron ion collider, which is, you know, on the way and passing all of its hurdles with regard to sustainability. We do a lot with sustainability, you know, carbon reduction. We're very cognizant of what we can do to reduce our carbon footprint, and we have expertise in those areas as well. So as Carl said, if we need a scientist or expertise, I can certainly tap somebody at the lab to come. And if I'm not the right person, I could get you the right person. So thank you for having me.
When will they split the atom that was split?
Not, not twice, but yeah, so now they want to collide more things. So big on colliders there.
Be amazing. So. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm Jeff Seaman. I've done a lot of environmental consulting here in Riverhead, looked at a variety of projects throughout the town. Perhaps my selection on the committee is to lower the bar for the brain trust, not in the category of my colleagues over here. But I'm more than happy to take a look at sort of the broad-based environmental implications of new technologies, what that might mean for sustainability in order to seek that balance that we all look for, for both economic purposes, technology-driven job opportunities, as well as how that's going to fit in with the complexities that we all deal with here in Riverhead with the, rather, multiple of communities that are going to interact environmentally, farmland preservation, open space, et cetera.
Thanks, Jeff.
Hi, I'm Frank. I run the water district. And like you said prior to this, I worked at Brookhaven Lab, and I just learned that what an incredible facility it was and what they've done to move humanity forward now and what they're doing now. I got to Riverhead, I didn't, we didn't have a great relationship, so we've done anything we can to cultivate that relationship because it seemed obvious to me that we have this incredible facility right next door that's looking to develop the latest technology and commercialize it. And here in Riverhead, we have a lot of land we can develop and available land, so it seemed like a good, like synergistic relationship. So we want to land those technologies within the town of Riverhead and develop them so that the whole world will benefit from it.
Thank you, Frank.
And I'd just like to say, this is Bob Kern. Bob Kern is our local expert on technology and energy worldwide, because there's not a day you don't come in that Bob doesn't have another story to tell you about what they're doing in Japan or in Europe or somewhere else. And he's on top of his game. He's a very well-read person, and we appreciate the information. I think this is a great idea, Bob. I'm really excited for this.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm real excited. I, I know when I first went to the lab, maybe, I don't know, maybe as long as eight years ago. And companies like Siemens were in their GE, and they were using the light source of what they were doing because it does 3D living X-rays, right? So they were experimenting with batteries at that time. They would fully charge them, X-ray them until they died, and then adjust them to get longer life out of them, blah, blah, blah. And Danielle, I want to, you know, I want to thank you for everything you've done. And I'll just say, there's one company, I'm not going to name that's, name them, that's in Riverhead. They have, I think, four people, no, about six people under 30 years old. They, they all started in the six figures. It's a technology company. And what I'm hoping, the message that gets sent down is that Riverhead is open to, you know, exploring new technology, given the fact that we do have, probably, and Greg, you would know, you know, several acres of industrial land. And I'd like to see high-paying jobs come here and eventually, you know, get the school involved, et cetera, et cetera. And you guys are working with robotics, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So robotics, you know, we all know, and I know Danielle's husband teaches robotics.
He does.
So I'm excited about this. I'm excited that you all are here and showed up, and thank you very much. And I don't know if the board has any questions.
We're just, I'm very interested to see how this is going to pan out. And I had a meeting yesterday with a, a group that we've put together called the Citizens Cooperative Development Team, and we're working on ideas for EPCAL in, in the very early stages. And we're not quite ready for primetime, but we're not too far away from primetime with it also. And we definitely wanted to incorporate you into that committee at some point in time as a subcommittee of this committee because we know the importance of that property and how technology and, and environment is important up there. So we think it would be a great mix to have these experts involved.
Yeah. And that's where I learned about pyralization, actually. Pyralizer, you know, and then engage.
Oh, yeah, that was another one of your words that nobody ever heard.
The guy, you know, named Triskin, who came down and made a presentation to the planning department, and he's working with NYSERTA. And we had, you know, there's so many smart people out there. I feel like, you know, I'm as dumb as a stump, but I'll tell you what, I'm a sponge, so I like to learn. And, you know, I really, again, appreciate everybody being here. Thank you.
Thank you for taking your time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Bob told you you're going to meet three times a week?
And don't let him know that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate this.
Good job, Bob.
Very exciting, very exciting, Bob.
And supervisor, it's worldwide and beyond.
Yeah. Oh, no, oh, yes, you're right, to be on board. Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, next up, we have our consultants from BFJ with matters surrounding comprehensive plan update. And it'll be Greg and Matt Charters and Heather Trojanowski. And I think BFJ, if I'm not mistaken, is going to be on the line.
Yeah, Noah should be on this line.
Perfect. There's Noah. Good morning, Noah.
Good morning, good morning. Thanks for accommodating me virtually.
Can we raise the volume on Noah, please?
Noah, is your volume up all the way on your device?
Testing, testing, can you hear me?
No, they've got to increase the volume for us.
Okay.
Try it now, Noah.
Testing, testing, can you hear me?
That's better. That's better, Noah.
Okay.
Okay, we, how do we want to do this in presentation film? Do we want to go through it page by page, or do we want to just go to the board members? Do they have specific questions?
Do you want to do page by page first, and then?
I think that might be a good idea.
And then if the board members have, you guys, if I can address, if not, then it will, it will be a question. How's that sound for you, Noah?
That sounds good. I'll follow along best I can.
Noah, don't move the mic away from your mouthing your tongue.
Okay.
So when you say you're not going to read it all, you're just going to?
No, we'll, we'll just go through the page and just acknowledge. I mean, a lot of them are just really quick run-throughs. So I mean, and I'll reference the page of the, the comp plan draft. So the first sheet in our packet starts on page 19. There's a note there regarding Northville. Again, one of the comments we received during the review period was basically an acknowledgement of the URT terminals that are there. They are a prominent feature, obviously, when driving down Sound Avenue up on Sound Shore Road. So just an acknowledgement in the plan that the, the terminals do exist.
And that it's a pre-existing nonconforming.
Pre-existing nonconforming. Again, there were, there were comments that, you know, looked for analysis of like future build-out, and that's not, you know, there's no applications for it right now. We're not looking at, analyzing build-out or future expansions of URT. It's really just an acknowledgement that they are there, pre-existing nonconforming. As we move on, next page is number 28. So this is a comment that really will sort of echo several times throughout the, the draft chapters here, referencing the 500-unit cap, analyzing whether to lift the cap, how to address the cap. There's a number of comments going forward about how it's worded, you know, relating to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy versus building permits. So I think this would be a worthy kind of stopping point to sort of get the board's opinion and have a discussion on that 500-unit cap because, as I said, it does come up several times.
I would say the language, just say to evaluate to, doesn't tell you when to do it. It's pretty open-ended. I don't think it's a bad recommendation to, to look at. It's not saying lift it, it's not saying keep it, it's not saying make it more restrictive.
I think we could probably clarify and bolster the language because a lot of people seem to think that we were going to look at lifting the cap, and that wasn't the intent of that.
No, I think the intent, at least from my perspective, was we let the 500 build-out occur.
Yep.
And then we reevaluate after that because 500 may be it.
Yeah.
Or maybe it won't be. But to limit it one way or the other right now, I think it's premature. And I think if we let the 500 happen and then we take a look at it, we have a better idea of how the 500 actually impacted everything downtown and whether or not we need more or whether we, we're just fine where we're at.
But the current projects, though, are currently over 500?
Yeah, we're probably in the neighborhood of, if everything right now gets approved, we're probably in the neighborhood of like 520 to 530 in the DC1.
Right.
And unfortunately, yeah, it's, it's a consequence just of how it's written. It's, it's on the 500th issue, the 500th CO, correct?
CO, yeah, which I still don't understand that to this day. That's crazy.
So I have a question. I mean, one of the things that concerns me is the fact that the, the, over 500 that we have, there are projects that are included in that that are five years old that haven't even started. At what point do we say, look, you're either going to start or not because it's just, it's, it's vapor?
I mean, we do, we do have a provision in our code, Bob, that speaks to abandonment of applications, I believe it's, after a year if we get, we have no correspondence or?
If there's no action taken on an application, we can send a letter to an applicant informing them that, basically, we have 30 days to follow up or take action. Or, you know, we can deem an application withdrawn or, you know, incomplete or, basically, a dead application.
Okay, so the second piece of this is, I know during talks with BFJ over the course of the last year, we did talk about, when we talk about the cap, that's rentals. We did talk about condos that could go over that, that 500 because that would be homeownership.
Is it specifically for rentals?
So the, the way the, it speaks to apartments on upper floors. Now, when you get, when you get to the differentiation of like apartments, condos, I mean, they're residential units. It just, you know, when you talk about homeownership, doesn't necessarily impact, it doesn't necessarily change impacts of a residential unit. So it's, I don't want to say it's just semantics, but whether someone's renting something or owning something doesn't necessarily change the fact that it is a dwelling unit that will be residence and all of the sort of impacts that come along with the residential development.
And I appreciate that, but I think part of the thinking in the conversations was the fact that it's a lot less expensive to gain equity by buying a condo, right, than it is renting and having no equity. So, and I know that that's what was part of the conversation, so I would like to continue that part of the conversation. Because I, you know, again, we need places where, if it's a studio condo and it's going to cost $200,000, fantastic, as opposed to a home. And, and, you know, I think we were looking the other day at the cost of condos in general at 1,400 square feet, we're close to, what, they're close to 600?
Five or 600,000.
Yeah. So, and we're not giving hospital workers, teachers, police the opportunity to gain equity. That's my concern.
I don't think the condos should be considered within that 500 account, you know, like I say, it is, it, it is definitely a major stepping stone and, and for most people today, now, look, and my kid's grown up, I mean, that, that is the stepping stone to, to future homeownership.
Absolutely.
You get nothing back with rent if, or rent if.
I agree with that. I don't think that the condos should be considered in the 500-unit cap. I, I just want to add also, I just wanted to ask, basically ask a question. On the existing buildings, the historic builds, there's also apartments that are in the comp plan they're talking about adding. Are they part of that 500-unit cap?
Well, that's something we offered, I think, in here to consider apartments on upper floors.
In, in existing buildings, you know, like a couple, a couple of two-story, well, so again, this all, it, it's really just relating to that 500 unit. And again, you know, to, to the supervisor's point.
I need you to speak closer, okay?
To, to the supervisor's point about, you know, sort of getting to that mark, that 500 unit, again, whether it's rentals, whether it's ownership units, getting to that sort of already pre-established mark and seeing if that sort of revitalization and the economic development comes behind it. As I understand it, that's, you know, the, the driver and that's the goal that we want to see is that, the thought is you're going to have people that, living downtown, you'll have foot traffic, and behind that, you will get like a wave of, you know, we'll get good restaurants, good uses downtown. Again, whether they're ownership units or rentals, I don't think necessarily is a, it's a differentiated ownership, it does not change the goals of.
I, I don't want to conjoin the two because there's a very distinct difference between renting and ownership. And not giving people the ability to get equity, I think, is, is a mistake, number one. Number two, can you tell me out of the 527 that are proposed, how many are there right now?
I don't, I, I don't have the numbers.
Well, we got 116 in Riverview Lofts. We have, what, 40?
36 in 331 East Main Street, 45 at the Connaught Crossing.
Okay.
I believe we've got.
There's a chart in the plan about it.
Yeah, there's a chart, correct? Yes.
My, my point is, it's under three, it's probably under 300.
I believe so.
And this is where I get concerned about, we have this cap that could go, never be, it may not be filled for three, four, or five years, you know, at the way these projects are going. And I'm, again, I don't consider a condo a unit. I like to differentiate between home, homeownership and rent.
Okay, so for constructed at Summerwind, we have 52. Woolworth, there's 19. Connaught Crossing, there's 45. Riverview Lofts, which Greg mentioned before, is 116. And then at 331, there are 36.
So what is that approximately? I had them up. You want me to, give me, give me the numbers, all right?
You ready?
Nope.
I, I think a general concept that also, the fear of the overabundance of apartments downtown was that we don't have, currently, as of right now, we speak, we don't have the necessary infrastructure, you know, meaning the parking facilities. But granted, we've just received a $24 million grant. When we put a parking garage into place and we upgrade things downstairs, you know, downtown, we're, we're building the infrastructure that's, that's probably needed to support, you know, the, these apartments and condominium units. I'm not a proponent of more apartments, apartments, rentals, rentals. But I, I do support the whole idea of having condominiums down there. I think it is, it is a great step. You know, it's the beginning of ownership, it is ownership.
And downsizing.
But I think.
And downsizing. It works, it works in both directions. I would, I would just, you know, caution the board to be aware, in terms of fair housing, it's, it's difficult to say what kind of housing and ownership, you can't really dictate unless it's incentive-based. It's very, it's very, very tricky to whether you can say it has to be ownership or it has to be a rental.
Wait, if, what do you mean? If somebody, if, if somebody, my point is this, if somebody comes in and wants to build condos, what's the problem with that? They want to build a building with condos?
There's not, I just don't know that it can, you can require that it has to be.
We can't, but we strongly encourage the developers coming in. That's one of the first conversations, I know the CDA has with them.
Absolutely.
And we do, too, when they play planning pre-submission meetings, we want, we want homeownership.
It can be a strong requirement, a strong recommendation.
Right, right.
I think it's, it's fair.
Are there incentives?
So that's what's considered in the plan, whether, you know, we were considering things for ownership purposes that's later on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want them considered upfront, you know, because, again, the fact is, when you look at, you know, yes, this proposed 500 and something, it's under 300 right now. It's, it's been under 300 for years. And I don't want to sit here five years from now, or six years from now, and find out we haven't even reached this unit cap. And I would like units, you know, I, I would like rentals separated from condos when we talk about units.
For inclusion within the cap?
Not, not for inclusion, no, I want the condos not to be.
Exactly, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
They can exceed the cap, condos, because.
Can I, can I jump in?
The difference is homeownership versus rental units.
Go ahead, Noah.
I just wanted to clarify just the way that the plan is written now. I think Bob is kind of speaking to what you're, you know, I, I think it's consistent with what you're saying. We have essentially two recommendations. One recommendation is to look at potentially allowing for properties to exceed the cap for homeownership alone. Granted, you know, that's something that I think the town still needs to, you know, look at the nuances, there are a lot of nuances of, of how that would be done. So that's one recommendation. And another recommendation is, aside from that, for all developments, once this 500-unit kind of wave finishes, to reevaluate the 500-unit cap, generally speaking, for all residential, to see what the appropriate number is, or if, if you don't need a number, just, you know, and, or, or whether, you know, maybe you don't want to change it, but it should be reevaluated at that time. And, and I think that's the language that we have in the document now.
Yeah, I guess, Noah, what I'm really concerned about is that reevaluating it after it's full does no good for homeownership, period. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, it, it just doesn't. I mean, we've been sitting here for five years with this, this, like ghost number of 537, of which there's less than 300, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good, it's a good question. That's a decision for the town board to make, you know, one who wants to reevaluate it. We just.
Right now.
That's certainly, that's certainly something that we could change, but something that we heard from the, you know, public comments, there was some reticence, but also, on the, on the contrary, a lot of the plans that were done, you know, previously to our work have talked about the need to increase residential options in the downtown area and that the 500-unit cap was a limiting factor. So a lot of the studies done recommended that that be reconsidered, but we did hear reticence from the community. So, a lot of the studies done recommended that that be reconsidered, but we did hear reticence from the community, and, and so it really is a town board, uh, decision ultimately on, on, you know, how we phrase it in the document, I don't think it's, um, you know, it, it, the, the change itself, it's not, you know, it really is, is a late, a future action, so it's just kind of a, a recommendation for the policy, you know, for, for the town board to consider, I don't think it's dramatically substantive, so it really is for you to decide.
I think that legal has to look at it to, to see, to your point of whether you're allowed to say, we want this to be a condo or, or not.
That was, that was my point, you can make the recommend, we can make us recommendation that that's what we want, it just can't be required.
Okay.
And, and I would add, but the, this, the language that we're talking about here is when we want to evaluate it. Which I think this, the supervisor's point was, once it's built out, prior to build out, or just leave the language the way it is?
Prior to build out, because.
It's gonna be a future action, so that's, that's the point of this recommendation.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna wait, you know, we're, we're good at waiting years and years and years and getting nowhere.
Do you want, Bob, what'd you think about, on a yearly basis, review it?
Oh, I, I want the whole thing reviewed on a yearly basis, because, you know, to sit on something that's gonna last twenty years, look what it's done. You know, it's just, to me, it's from town boards that didn't look at zoning constantly and say, we need to make a change now, you know, that's.
Annually?
Maybe annually, definitely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Thank you.
How do we do best with recommendations? I, I firmly believe that the town of Riverhead has done more than a share of affordable housing on the east end of Long Island.
You would be correct.
And, and I, I would really like to, how do we encourage more when these apartments come in, that they are in back market rate homes? Because that's what's needed, we need people with the ability to spend money downtown, to, to visit those restaurants, to go to those stores and those shops, and to spend money downtown.
Yeah, again, again, it's gonna be a recommendation, but that's the, I don't know, that you could require it.
Well, the numbers to get us up to the five hundred now are all, all our market rate, uh, apartments.
So if you notice. I don't know, there's something we can do to, to, had, I understand you're just saying, right, how do we hold firm to that, that all sudden that, that a developer doesn't come in and go, well, it's easy just to sign off on, on, on other homes.
And to Ken's point, he's absolutely correct, 'cause if the market changes, and a developer's built a five-story building, and they're gonna say, look, it's gonna sit vacant here, and I'm gonna use it as a tax write-off, or I'm gonna have to drop the rent, you know? So that can definitely possibly happen. We were in a meeting with another developer, and there's something that I'd like you guys to look into, where they're doing something in Colorado where when you rent, you're actually getting equity. You know, there's a,
Like a rent, rent to own?
Well, it's not necess-, it's not a rent to own, per se, and I, I'm not, yeah, that could be, you could, you could, you look into that model. But no, what they're doing is they're renting apartments and they're giving e- equity, so if you're there for five years, at the end of that five years, you're getting equity. I don't know that percentage, but it does two things, one is it gives you equity, two, it makes you take care of the apartment, so you get your full equity. Um, talk to Dawn about that.
Yeah, can you send me whatever it is?
I mean, typically when someone's renting, if they pay security, doesn't it go into an escrow account that?
It's, it's more than that.
I was thinking like your deposit back, right?
Yeah, and I mean, that, that's a reason, that's a reason for people to take care of properties.
This program Bob's talking about, I, I believe I read about it, and it is, you do get some of that money back when you decide to leave that rental. Some of your rent actually is going towards equity, like, it's almost like a savings account for you, to help you to be able to save money while renting, and then be able to hopefully use a down payment out of that at some point in time.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I'd, I'd like to explore all options available to, you know, anybody that wants to reside here.
Can I just add one other point, uh, I, I know it's going ahead, but it's still back on this five hundred unit cap, and it was something Bob mentioned about, if they say their market rate, and then they can't sell them, and then they reduce it, I'm going way ahead, but where the hospital is looking to put their own apartment buildings, I don't think we should allow them to do that on that property, those professionals should be going to the market rate apartments here in downtown that we're building, that's why we wanted them built, we wanted market rate for young professionals to come buy into these. That's exactly the kind of resident we want to go into downtown. I don't think that we should give them their own campus with their own community of shopping and such. They, that's, I, I know this is why we wanted these apartments down here in downtown, so I'm just moving ahead. But I'm asking as, in terms of that five hundred unit cap and that their market rate, I just wanted those two things to come together in downtown.
I understand what you're saying, but I, I'm not against the hospital being able to do that, because you, you, you're talking about, you, you have to compare apples to apples, because a lower-end paying job in the hospital is never gonna afford a market rate apartment. But if they do a lower rate, uh, rental or, or residence for their workers, some of their lower-paid workers would have a place to stay. Your more professional, you know, certified doctors, nurses, PAs, whatever, obviously make a good bit more money, and they could maybe afford the, the, um, market rate, where not all the workers in, in the hospital make that big salary.
Would you put a cap on, on, on the financial cap of income towards, who could live on the hospital grounds?
I agree, 'cause I don't think that the comp plan says that.
But that's something we can have in a discussion with the hospital about what they're looking to do.
Because I think in the comp plan, they're referring to the young professionals using that campus. So I would agree with Bob and Ken that, no, we put a financial cap, if you're gonna allow apartments over there, but they have to be a certain lo- lower income to utilize them.
Got it, okay.
Got anything else exciting, guys?
Not on that page.
So, so just, just to be clear, for the five hundred unit cap, it sounded like the big change was to, instead of say that it should be evaluated, um, you know, once projects are done, it should be evaluated annually.
Yes, I would agree.
A value, I missed a little bit.
Annually.
Oh, oh, yeah, and, and even every six months, I mean, the market keeps changing with interest rates.
You wanna do it daily?
I mean, projects take time to build out, and you, you will have plenty warning, I think, on it.
Um, moving on to the next comment, uh, there were a couple of notes on page thirty-three. Um, this has to do with residential population projections, there were two notes in here that, uh, they can update it to make it consistent with the DG EIS. Um, on both of those, so I think that's something that BFJ will take care of, making those, making those two numbers consistent.
Agreed.
Um, page number forty-two, so again, this was a, a comment that sort of comes up multiple times, is, uh, short-term rentals, Airbnbs.
There's a lot of opposition.
Lot of opposition.
I'm, I'm against it, I, I don't wanna lower the number of days we have now, because it just creates a nightmare and, and just an enforcement problem alone. Uh, what it would create with the number of Airbnbs that we know are out there illegally, if you will, um, we just, there's no way we could control it, I don't know.
And it becomes a quality of life issue, you have a lot of people that have lived long-term up on the bluffs in Waiting River and so forth, and then when an Airbnb comes in next door, and it's Friday night, Saturday night, summer parties and so forth, it becomes a quality of life with parking, noise, music.
And I mean, not, not just quality of life, yeah, but it just, it also, you know, when you look at Riverhead, you know, try by, try going on Zillow and looking for a house in Riverhead prices, or, or, you know, as it is all over Long Island, when you start opening these things up to Airbnbs, they sort of become a commercialized value, where it's no longer a family buying that as a single-family residence, you get people who are purchasing these properties.
And purchasing at a more, at a, at a commercial value, which. The young people can't afford it, and they're paying above-market rate for the house, so.
And we do have hotels here.
We do have hotels.
Yeah, and for the record, I'm opposed to Airbnbs as well.
So I think we're just looking to omit the last sentence in that third paragraph, I mean, everything else before that is basically saying that the Airbnbs are sort of a strain on the housing stock in Riverhead, so I think it's, yeah, it's important to say that, but we can get rid of that last sentence.
I think so.
I'm gonna continue looking at two, you know, two-week rentals, uh, as the minimum, um, for me, anyway. 'Cause there are people that rent weekly and, uh.
Um, going on to the next page, forty-four, again, references to short-term rentals, so I think we've, uh,
We can clean that up.
Yeah. Uh, moving on, page forty-six, again, this touches on the five hundred unit cap. Obviously, you'll see these things pop up, so we wanna look at the, look at the cap on an annual basis, reassess.
So, yeah, so this, this one references once development, the pipeline is complete, and we can make reference to the annual look.
So, but just from you guys, from the planning staff, what, what's your take on the fact that we've had, uh, several projects now that the applications were put in probably three, maybe even four years ago, that are included in that cap? At what point is it like, hey, guys, put a shovel in the ground, or, you know, we're moving to the next developer who's ready to go?
Or better yet, do we change the wording that it's not the first five hundred to get a CO, because to me, that just makes no sense.
'Cause then you almost have a rush to get all these applications in, even if it's a, you know, flying in the sky application that no one's ever gonna build, with the intent that they're gonna achieve, achieve that CO, but it counts towards our total.
Right.
We can consider it.
But, yeah, definitely, that's a really good point, uh, that should be looked at.
Building permit makes a little bit more sense, I would say.
Yes, correct.
Or site, or site plan approval?
Yes.
Either one.
Yeah, even, I mean, building permit, 'cause there, there's applications, uh, I mean, for example, I think the Zenith building on McDermott was approved, I wanna say like in the
Ten, seventeen years ago.
Late two thousands, again, they got final site plan approval, never drew a building permit, so I mean, uh,
Building permits can be renewed every year, and there's no, like,
Expiration or limit on the number.
Yeah, there's no limit on the number of times you can renew a building permit.
Yeah, I, I, I just think when someone pulls a building permit and they're, they've paid that, you know, hundred thousand dollars, whatever the building permit fee is, I think it kind of lends more degree that they're actually gonna construct it, rather than getting an approval and just letting it expire, you know, getting an approval to maybe drive up the price and then sell the property to somebody else, you know.
Well, that's my, that's my thing, you hold it, do you keep renewing year after year, right, knowing that the price is going up, so it really becomes an investment and not at the idea to actually build, you know, so.
So I, I, I think it sort of just echoes back to, we need to address how that is worded in the code, and I think that the plan can make recommendations, and again, we can discuss and come to an answer as to how we wanna word it.
I mean, it could possibly be, and, or maybe it couldn't, but I'll throw it out there, uh, if we use the state definition for being vested in a project, that could be a limit, uh, or timeline that we could use to make that determination. 'Cause once it's vested, then it's there, that would give them maybe the shot at still being under the five hundred, if your project's not vested, you know, and the five hundred come up, sorry, we're there.
Only, my only concern with vested is that, um, people have, there, there might be a state definition, but people might have different interpretations. And there have been legal challenges about who's vested and when, whether it's, you know, just is, does it mean, you know, shovel in the ground, or does it mean, um, you know, applications and investment and lawyers and, and so on, there, there could, there could be a gray area.
Put the mic, you, you moved the mic away from your mouth.
Put the microphone in your mouth.
I'm just concerned, I'm just concerned that even with the state's definition, there might still be some gray area with vest-, with vested.
More in front of discussion, what exactly is vested?
Yeah.
Yeah, and in general, from a, from a, a planning perspective, you know, we do look at, like, I don't, I don't, I don't like interpretations, like, I, I very much like clarity, so that's why.
We could, we could perform our own definition of it to use for our guidelines for the five hundred cap.
Yeah, okay.
That's true.
That's an easy look.
Right, define it specifically.
All right, so, uh, moving on to page now sixty-five.
Can I just, can I just go back to, yeah, we, we also, I also wanted to go back to, um, forty-six, uh, is talking about accessory dwelling units and increasing the number of those and not allow it, not requiring the three-year, um, CO.
Wait, not, not requiring what, I'm sorry.
The three-year wait before you could.
Oh, oh, yeah, I agree.
The three-year wait does come up later on, and I mean, that is something we will discuss.
Okay, 'cause I just wanted to state that I'm opposed to adding these units, and it's right here in, on page forty-six. And I don't know if you wanna address it here, or.
So, I mean, we can, and we will, so I mean, ju- just in general, like accessory dwelling units, accessory apartments, um, I mean, we've had our accessory apartment code has been on the books, I believe now, for sixteen years. And I, I don't believe we've seen a extreme proliferation of these units, I mean, there was a feeling, when you go back and you look at some of the comments on when that was adopted, there was very much a concern, that it was just, that every, every property in the town was gonna pop up and have an accessory apartment, and I mean, that hasn't necessarily materialized.
Well, there's a great deal of effort to have that really be increased, there is, uh, there are, um, groups and organizations that are pushing for that strongly.
There's a cap on accessory part, in.
It's two hundred and fifty, and I think the town board is able to go to five hundred, um, I have to look at the code, but I think we're,
We have less than a hundred?
The building department, I'd have to look, um, Sue Edwards had a, you know, like, a spreadsheet, because she handled all of the accessory apartments, I think we're around a hundred. And keep in mind, like, if a property gets sold and it's no longer owner occupied, it's no longer eligible for accessory apartment, so it needs to be removed. There is a mechanism for people to transfer, so if you buy a house with an accessory apartment, you have to refill out all of your, um, affidavits, um, provide like, that, you know, the information that you are residing in either the house or the apartment, and there is a fee to transfer it. Um, but there have been a few that have actually been removed because they weren't owner occupied.
Well, I was just concerned, or because there was a great deal of correspondence from the community, and people also spoke about not wanting to, um, lower the CO um, threshold, three-year, have you, they didn't wanna see that go away, and they don't wanna add to this. And, um, or also change the dimensions, they wanted to change, um, to increase from the three hundred SF to a maximum of six hundred and fifty, and forty percent of the dwelling.
Forty percent would remain, no matter what.
Right, but there's real concern about that, and I don't wanna see those increase, and I just wanted to be on record about that, that.
That's how it is now, right?
It's, yeah, it's, there's efforts to try to extend that higher, um, and I just don't wanna do that. The town should consider eliminating the six hundred and fifty square foot max and limit the size of accessory units to forty percent. There's a, consider increasing it.
It's already limited to forty percent now.
I know, there's, the language in here, you consider eliminating those, um,
Not the forty percent, just the six hundred and fifty square.
Right.
Just to go up to six hundred and fifty.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't give like a new number, um, but obviously, we'd like to hear what the board has to say about that, because it was something that came up quite a bit during the.
That's why I just didn't wanna skip over it to the next thing, I thought we should talk about it.
Yeah, I think it comes up later on in the document, but we can talk about it now, that's fine.
So I mean, so, so global, you know, globally speaking, when you look at Long Island and its housing stock, and the general growth of the housing stock on Long Island, we're like, we're not doing enough to keep up, to retain young people, make something, and I don't, I don't wanna say affordable in terms of like, what is, you know, a certain percentage of AMI, but just something that a young person can afford, so I mean, Long Island in general, the, the single-family zoning, you know, like Long Island built suburbia, and it's kind of modeled all over the country, and it's just, now, single-family zoning is not doing anything to allow young people to stay on Long Island. I mean, you know, who can afford a house for seven hundred thousand dollars now, so I mean, having more affordable options, as opposed to a single-family residence or a, you know, thirty-four hundred dollar a month, you know, apartment unit, uh, there needs to be some sort of effort to retain people, I mean, that's, you know, and that's, that's.
It also allows people to age in place too, I mean, you have an older person who owns a home, and you have a family member who might come live with them, the older person could live in the apartment or stay in the, in the main house. I mean, the limiting factor on this is it has to be owner occupied, one of, either the house or the unit, and that's not recommended to change.
I'm just concerned that what you, you, it may develop into a homeowner turning into a landlord, well, again, we don't have enough code enforcement to make sure that this does not become an apartment complex in your home.
Apart, well, they're limited, it's limited to one bedroom, and I think they get a rental permit as well.
I know.
And it's inspected by.
In addition to the accessory apartment permit, that's, um, up for inspection.
I guess I'm just concerned, I'm sorry Heather, I didn't mean to speak over you, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, um, they get a rental permit from code enforcement on top of the accessory apartment permit from the building department. And once the accessory apartment permit is issued, it's a three-year inspection, and then after that, it's five years, every five years, they have to renew and get an inspection with the building, uh, department on top of their code inspection.
I guess I'm just concerned that we don't have a lot of code enforcement officers to make sure these aren't turning into illegal apartment complexes. That's really what I'm most concerned about, if we had more code enforcement.
We made a commitment last year, when we, we changed the inspections to, to a yearly basis, that we would utilize that money, we raised the permit fees, and we would be utilizing that money to expand the code enforcement department, and I think we're on the track of doing that. And so that they, we want them to get in that, that apartment every year to see if smoke detectors have been removed, if kitchens have been built and so on and so forth.
I will remind the board that this is just a recommendation that's going to require future action, so.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we have some bad players, but there's also some families that legitimately need accessory apartments, you know? You, you have somebody in your family, you know, your, your father passes away, and your mom's left at home, she can't live by herself, she's not ready for, um, a nursing home. Come live with us, mom, well, where's mom going to go? Into the accessory apartment, you know, it's, we have to provide for, you know, the good people.
Oh, sure.
And I, I mean, I, I realize, I think that the code does have to step up on this and, you know, just keep track of it, but.
I do understand people's concern about getting rid of the three-year for the principal structure, um, you know, I don't have an issue with getting rid of it for the, the, the. I do understand people's concern about getting rid of the three-year for the principal structure, um, you know, I don't have an issue with getting rid of it for the, the, the accessory structures, because there are plenty of people that wanna build, you know, um, mother, like an in-law apartment, but they wanna have their own space, and they basically have to build the garage first, wait three years, and then, I mean, I've seen it. From working in the building department, and some people, they're very, very patient, and they're straightforward when they come in to build the garage, saying, this is what I plan on doing with it, but I understand I have to wait, so for some people, it's not always positive.
Right, it could be, you know.
Maybe we should clarify that if we wanna leave that in, it should be on the principal structure.
Yes, I mean, that's.
To be what, was it?
On the prin, the, the three-year limit should be on the principal structure, because what, what Heather's saying is someone will come in and build a garage, but then they have to wait three years for the C O on the garage to be.
Meanwhile, they're already following all of the provisions, they're, it's owner occupied, you know, their house was built in the nineteen eighties, it has a C O and.
It's unnecessarily.
Uh, I wanna, uh, the information, I, I listened to you, Greg, and I listened to you, Denise, and, you know, the data shows that, you know, people are not, this is not gonna proliferate, but.
No, they're not knocking down the doors to the building.
You know, but, and you're saying there are organizations out there, but the fact is that they have to be, uh, owner occupied?
Have to, yes.
And you have to provide.
And I, I, I think I know what you're talking about, those organizations, you just can't drop people in that are not part of the family.
Right.
Right, so, I, and with that, I, I'm definitely in favor of dumping that three-year thing, because I think it's arbitrary.
Can I jump in? Can I jump in?
Statistics.
No, wants to just jump in.
I just wanted to mention on page two oh seven in the plan, uh, under accessory dwelling units, uh, we talk about this, and we, we talk about that, um, you know, currently, uh, cer, you know, the code mandates applicants to have a certificate of occupancy for an accessory building for a duration of three years, et cetera, et cetera. Um, originally intended to permit accessory units in exa, existing buildings while discouraging new developments, this provision poses a burden on applicants. Potential remedy could involve modifying the requirement to apply the three-year C O period to the principal building rather than the accessory building.
Right, so that's in there.
So if your house has been there for more than three years, like, why, why penalize a person who's building a garage to put in an accessory apartment?
Agreed.
I guess I just keep going back to.
I, I agree. Enforcement.
Yeah, and, and not just that, but we're building all these apartments, people want them maybe go in those apartments and not let the homeowner profit. I'd like to see the town.
Yeah, I think, I think we need.
It's a, cause it's a lot less money. When you think about it, if you, if you're putting your mother-in-law there, you don't wanna put her in an apartment.
Oh, no, I understand. Your mother-in-law's not paying rent. I, I, no, I'm not.
But even, even if your kid is going to college, graduates college and can't afford something.
Yeah, there's. Where's a balance?
Or, or any, and you know, it's like, the, the, people just need a place to live. I mean, people do not hesitate, like, people are living in illegal basement apartments, you know, that are not inspected, that are not safe, you know, like they're, people just need a place to live.
Mm-hmm.
They can't afford it.
And that's, you know.
Yeah, that's why I favor just eliminating the three years altogether. I don't see a mad rush of people coming in, oh, let's build houses now in Riverhead, because we can build an A D U right with it when we build them, or rent that out, but not with the guidelines that are included, you have to be owner occupied.
Owner occupied and limited to one bedroom, so I mean, again, our, our underlying residential densities, you know, like the one acre, two acre zones, you're still, you're not changing that, you're, you're essentially adding a, a one-bedroom accessory dwelling to.
Can I just ask, how do we ensure that this does not become illegal Airbnbs?
The same way we do now, I mean, they, it's an enforcement thing with code, so they're inspecting every year, I mean, it's, it's complaint driven, really, just like everything with code enforcement. So, we got a complaint that you think someone's coming in and out of there every week, code's gonna go down there and do an inspection, probably has to see the lease, I assume, or.
And, and to the Airbnb thing.
Or, or rental permit, yeah.
I'm gonna address the Airbnb thing, probably most people don't know this, there's over four hundred in Riverhead, and how many get complaints, and I'm not for, or I'm not, this has nothing to do with it, I'm for or against it, I'm just saying, you get hardly any complaints, so I, I don't have this, those same concerns, I'm dropping the three years, to your point, Greg.
So I mean, I, I, I think we have a consensus, pretty much, at the three-year, we wanna.
I would like to eliminate that.
Okay.
Yep.
You notice Noah has his mic near his mouth, but the moment he talks, he moves it away.
All right, um, so.
I'm doing my best.
Sixty-five?
Sixty-five, I think we're up to.
Let's just, I know it's not in there, but I'm, I'm going to our own, let's, let's just pause for a minute at page sixty, if we can, in the, uh, manual.
I don't, I don't have, well, I've just got.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, basically, uh, uh, something I've been looking at for a while, so I just wrote my own notes out, so I don't mess anything up. New York's, this is going, we're basically talking about the FAR ratio. So, New York State set a goal of clean energy future for zero emissions electricity systems with renewable energy to power homes, government offices, schools, places of work, and so forth. The New York State goal for two thousand and thirty is to have ten thousand megawatts, so we're talking about the whole renewable energy. The state is advocating for community solar, which would be unlike traditional solar, um, you would, some families can't put it on individual roof, rooftops, uh, doesn't fit or conform to their property, or don't have the ability, if they're renting homes and things like that, so two, so community solar benefits that one on there. When we talk about the FAR ratio, the current code right now permits a FAR of point four in the industrial A and C. I understand when we build, I'm not interested in cre, in increasing the FAR ratio for like, industrial warehouses and things like that, where they say, okay, I have my footprint, I want, they can, they can buy T D Rs and they can go higher. But when you talk about like solar projects, solar energy renewal projects, they, they can't go higher, you can't stack solar on top of each other and go up. So, I really would like to see that, um, uh, I would like to really see that the, that it, it does not apply to energy renewable projects.
So it, so our, our commercial solar code has its own dimen, set of dimensional regulations, I believe it's seventy-five percent.
It is.
So basically, if you have a piece of property, where your fencing is, cannot, you know, the, the actual improvements, the roadways, I think it's seventy-five percent lot coverage, which is what all of the commercial solar farms that we've seen out in Galvinton area were holding to that standard, and I think those projects turned out, you know, pretty well with that existing. So, I mean, floor area is just for buildings, it has nothing, nothing to do with solar panels or, you know.
Maybe the way, the way I'm reading it, it's a reduced allowable density of industrial development to, um, and now you, you wanna go down from point four to point two-five. With the potential to go up to point three through T D Rs, you're going up to where it is currently.
Yep.
But I, I wanna make sure that, I wanna make sure that, that all, you know, um, solar, battery, any energy renewable, are not going to be subjected to this.
No, they're, they're already.
They don't, they don't have parking spaces, they don't have driveways.
No, they're not, they're not.
They should be able to go further.
There's no floor area ratio for a solar farm, there's, there's no building, there's no, no floor area ratio.
Where, where is that clarified?
So that's, so they have, they're under the supplementary, they each have their own supplementary section in the code, because they're their own regulations and.
It's in the, it's in the commercial energy production section, and it ha, it spells out its own dimensional regulations, but there, so I mean, floor area is defined as the total amount of building area in relation to the total lot size, it has not, it, there's no restriction, it does not correlate to the size of renewable energy.
Both, both batteries and storage are seventy-five percent, I know, solar.
So with that, right, um, when we reduce, uh, the F A R at a point four, right, and I know we've had numerous discussions on this, the more I thought about it, if I own a piece of industrial land, right, and you're now taking away some value of that land that I own. And that's what happened in the two thousand and three comp plan, when they took farmland from one acre zoning to two acre zoning, they basi, they cut the value of that land in half. I'm not so sure that I'd be real happy if I owned industrial land to, uh, take it that's now allowable at point four and only go to point three.
So, the, the point four, I'm gonna, so in the two thousand and three comp plan, the industrial C zoning district was originally entitled industrial recreational zone. The two thousand and three comp plan recommended a low F A R of point two, so that was what was originally recommended in two thousand and three.
And it went to point two.
Somehow it went to point four, I have no, I cannot find any record.
We tried to find the minutes.
The town board minutes, so I, I, so I cannot explain, you know, when we talk about the, like, this is not a God given, you know, he didn't say you can build point four, I mean, these are established by the recommendations of the comp plan, so I haven't, I can't explain how the point four even got there, and certain.
It makes more sense to go to point two, I mean, it's in line with the, the.
More in line with the health department standards, which would allow about.
The plan is recommending point two-five, right, so.
Yeah, health department's about seventeen percent.
Correct.
I, I'd be more out there if it went from point two-five to point three-five as opposed to, you know, it's just shy of point four, and you just set the building back, you know, that you have ways of setting buildings back, but, uh, I'm concerned we start taking away people's rights, that's all.
I, I agree with Bob, and I think that we can go up a little bit more on the FAR ratio, but also on page sixty, it really doesn't, it's very vague in terms about coverage, and making sure that even if somebody purchases T D Rs, and they go higher, well, then all of a sudden, the structures are now visible, and now we'll look and.
Well, they still have to meet, I mean, obviously, we're gonna have to amend the code.
Setbacks, but you, you can still.
And then we're recommend.
The higher a building is, the more you're gonna see it from the.
We're recommending a period, a pyramid law, so it's gotta be set back a certain amount of feet, so the visual impact is not as much, so the higher you go, the further it has to be set back.
Right, the, the purpose of these ratios was to create more T D Rs to preserve more land.
So that's part of it, we don't wanna, you know, cut the bottom of our T D R program out by going too high, then they're not gonna purchase as many T D Rs.
Here's what I, I had a conversation, I've been speaking with, in terms of the T D Rs, developers and the farm bureau, and I can, I can tell you now that the farm bureau is real concerned about this, because they don't want, they, they really wanna sell T D Rs. Right, and they don't want anything that's gonna get in the way of selling T D Rs. Now, we may think, oh, somebody's gonna be willing to go ahead and extend their building by point five if they buy T D Rs. What if the T D Rs don't, you know, we have to sit with them and really look at how much space are you getting for those T D Rs? Right now, they're saying thirty-five hundred, um, square feet for one, right? But we, when we get down to the T D Rs, we need to have the developers in the room and the T D R committee in the room, uh, to really come up with the numbers. I know we all want it to work.
I feel like we've done that several times throughout the process, and I mean.
I know, but I, you know what, as people, you're digesting it every day, excuse me one second, they're digesting it over time, and this is a conversation I had last week, I had, uh, and I had another one with developers last night. But that's, you know, because, again, you guys are on this all the time, but.
Can I, can I jump in again? I just wanted to mention also that that's also addressed by the ratios that we've talked about, so, you know, we wanted to find something that's more equitable, and we can have a better market for both buyers and sellers of T D R.
Yeah.
So that if, you know, um, one T D R doesn't equal necessarily, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but what, what we've recommended, but, you know, maybe it's not, um, three thousand square feet of extra commercial space, maybe it's five thousand or more, I, I don't, again, I don't have the numbers in front of me.
I'd rather see the T D R.
But we recommended kind of a, maybe a little bit more of a gain for the use of T D Rs.
I think the point was is that, you know, we're reco, like, the plan recommends these ratios, may, they might not work depending on how the market changes, so the plan also recommends that we revisit those ratios in order to keep the T D R valuable.
Perfect, right, it did, it did say that.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
So it's not, it's not a.
It's a.
Too bad you're out.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
They still have to amend the code to draft the code from these recommendations.
Yeah, and it also said you could use the T D Rs for, change the formula for, um, sewer or for other infrastructure, the values that are.
Well, there, there were ways that, how, how to, how to measure the T D R, you know, we've had discussions with B F J just about how, you know, is it based on impacts, or is it based on sanitary, you know, flows from whatever those T D Rs?
And these are things that are gonna require a lot of, uh, you know, future thought and analysis when we come to, you know, drafting and adopting the code amendments.
This is your guiding document to get you there, essentially.
Right, but I'm, I'm still in favor of starting this, and instead of a point two-five, starting at a point three and going to point three.
Would you, Bob, would you consider making the, the square footage increase for the T D R to be more with a lower F A R than with the T D R is more valuable, so, and it works for the developer, too, so then the bonus they're getting per T D R is more. Rather than just saying, we're gonna lower the, we're gonna, you know, let you have a bigger building or more floor area as of right, keep it low, but then make the value of the T D R more, say maybe it's five thousand, and then.
Cause the, I can, to enhance the, the T D Rs.
No, I understand.
Cause the program isn't working the way that it is right now, so, we need something.
Correct.
Then you need to talk, I mean, for me, I need to speak with, you know, somebody who's developing buildings of this size, and, you know, I, I just include, I'm sorry, not me, but include them in the conversation, so we're amortizing it, it makes sense, that's all.
Got it.
Where, can we make a, a, can we agree to at least make a note of something in it, that these FAR ratios do not include, you know, stuff within, within solar and.
It doesn't, it doesn't now, yeah.
I mean, we can.
But where, it's not clear, where, show me where does it say that?
It's in the, pull up the commercial solar energy production. Yeah, so it's in the, I'll, I'll read it, it's already in our code, I'll read it to you now.
Okay, but if we're adopting this, are we going in a different direction?
No, I don't think it's gonna change anything.
It doesn't affect, it doesn't affect.
There's no floor area for solar farms, there is none, there's no built, there's no built.
And battery?
Same thing.
There's no, it doesn't.
That's, that's why each of those has its own separate.
Has its own supplementary regulations, cause it's not the same as like building a building.
I just wanted to mention.
Why not write it in there? Why are we, why are you hesitant to put it in there?
We can add a sentence of like, I think this potential wants to say something.
Yeah, 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 really, yeah, like, I, there's something I've been, I've been talking to deputy town attorney about a lot, and like, I just, I wanna know that we can go into these community projects for, that, that the state is asking for, and that we're not limiting, we have E P Cal, and we have a, we, we have the potential to do projects up there, and where, where.
So I think it's very easy to add a qualifying sentence, uh, in the, uh, master plan update, and when you go through the code and you go through the different zones that it's permitted, it does not flag you or necessarily direct you to supplementary regs. So, either it should be combined in the one code where it's permitted, calling out that the F A R doesn't apply, rather than referring not to the zoning district and its dimensional table, but now to a separate supplementary code.
Without that.
You should clean that up, but, but I don't know why you couldn't have a clarification in the update to the master plan regarding.
Cause otherwise, a developing company reads this comprehensive plan, they look at it, and they walk away, and they go, there's nothing we can do here, we can't, you know, you, you need that, you need that FAR ratio on, on, on projects like solar.
It doesn't have.
So I mean, lot, lot coverage for solar, it says, the lot coverage shall include the total square footage of the perimeter of all the solar panels, inclusive of interior space between panels, in addition to driveways and service roads, and accessory equipment, buildings or structures. Further down in the commercial energy code, it says the maximum lot coverage shall be seventy-five percent, so I mean, it, it's very clearly defined in the code.
And yet, in the dimensional table, and I don't have it in front of me, so don't quote me, I think it's in possibly industrial C, you'll see floor area ratio with T D Rs, point four, and then there's a little footnote, footnote fourteen, which says, well, if it's battery energy.
Correct.
Refer to the battery energy code, but it doesn't include, if it's solar, go to the solar energy code, and your industrial A, you're not gonna have that same footnote.
Seems like why are we hiding it so far down the road? Let's put it right up front in the plan.
We should clean up the current code, we, you know, that way.
That's easy.
Yeah, I mean, we could just put, if, if it's, if it's as simple as just putting something in the plan that says.
It's a footnote, I mean, in the code.
Yeah, I, and, and I would just say energy in general, you know, because you don't know what's coming down the pipe, you know, I mean, outdoor, whatever.
I don't think it's unreasonable to just add a sentence to clarify that, I think it's fine.
Okay.
And then, and the, on the other things, then also potentially with like solar, battery-powered energy, but I would like to see something more from the fire department side of things, that, that we, we incorporate community benefit component into these things, where they're going to have to participate, there'll be finances available, if necessary, if somebody comes in with a large project, and we, we have to do cover costs of training, cover equipment, personnel, gas detectors, or anything. Infrared devices, that, that, that are community, um, benefit component, I think should be part of that, it protects us, protects the local fire departments from cost of training and certain equipment, so I'd like to be some type of component added to that.
As part of the New York State Fire Working Safety Group, when they studied the battery fires, they recommended changes to the New York State Fire Code that include all of those things as part of the fire code. Obviously, those changes haven't been made yet, but that's the intention of the state to require trainings, pay for equipment to the municipality where these things are cited.
I just wanna, you know, make sure that, again, that, that it's referenced within, within this, and then I think we need to be a little bit more specific on coverage. When you, we drive down Edwards Avenue now, I mean, you didn't see this all, but sometimes cars go off the road and take trees out, and lose things that they have that continue maintenance, that they have to restore and preserve, um, the buffer areas of these projects, to make sure that, that you continue to, that they're not a visible, don't speak eyesore, anyway, how it goes.
I think we do have language in the plan that does address that, um, I don't know where offhand, but, but we do have.
It's in sixty, but it's not very specific about what they have to do, I'm looking for a little bit more depth to make sure that these are, there's proper buffers in place.
Okay.
And they're maintained for the duration of the project.
Can I just go back to the question about the number for? Can I just go back to the question about the number for FAR? Um, you know, I think the numbers were a result of convers-
Hold on, Noah, just.
Sorry.
Can you start again? I apologize.
Oh, no, it's okay. I, can you hear me? Is it okay?
Yes, you're good.
Okay. I just wanted to go back to the numbers for FAR, uh, you know, just to explain those numbers came out of, you know, many, many conversations with um, with the steering committee, with the public, stakeholders, et cetera. Uh, you know, that, those numbers were um kind of important numbers because they were the basis of a lot of the analysis that we did in the generic environmental impact statement. Um, so if you change those numbers, that will be a dramatic change to the work that we have to do to update those documents. It doesn't mean that you can't change them in the future if you decide to adopt zoning at a, at a different number. I think the intent is clearly established that you want to reduce FAR and, and provide some increase with TDRs. Um, you know, and if you, if you change it at a later point, you can do that and kind of modify the analysis as appropriate when you adopt the zoning. But I just wanted to kind of, you to understand the ramifications of being that specific at this point. If you're, you know, if you're not sure, I ju- I just want you to kind of understand.
I got it.
And the context.
Yeah, and I think Matt's explanation of just giving more TDR, you know, a lot more square footage for one TDR. And again, we'll put down that.
Covers it.
I think that'd have to be considered at the time.
Yep.
Matt's still sticking in that same area where, where um Ken was just talking? If you look at, uh, still in economic development, uh, three point seven, it talks about codifying downtown Riverhead pattern book. I don't wanna just skip over this to continue to advance its recommendations. It talks about um, the, now adopting the pattern book should be codified.
Yes.
To give it more. Well, the only problem is that um the pattern book does, uh, currently, we allow five-story buildings, right? With eighty percent lot coverage and you can even apply for a hundred percent. The pattern book says that um, the pattern book recommends a FAR of three point five with a height of only four stories. So if we do that, we're gonna have buildings all out of code, right? If we have five-story building. So I don't know if we should just gloss over codifying that now. Because I, while it says recommends following it, this recommendation in this comp plan says codify it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in a weird, the pattern book's in a weird limbo right now. Cause it was adopted by the town board, but it was never implemented into the code.
So. Yeah. I don't think it's what we wanted to, that's just my recommendation.
I, I totally agree. I do not want, it limits us if, if we, if somebody wants a fifth story and they're gonna buy TDRs to get it, yeah.
Codify it, you're gonna make it law, so I mean.
Yeah, I don't wanna, and the pattern book to me is just.
I mean, we, we've really been working, you know, the, the last couple of projects, I mean, two oh three, two thirteen, you know, a lot of these projects have been really incorporating and taking that pattern book to heart. You know, two oh three, two thirteen, they stepped back both their fourth and their fifth floor. Um, four twenty-six West Main Street, you know, they've incorp- they've incorporated a lot of those design elements.
That's fine.
I agree, but I don't know if we wanna codify it. It's what this pat, this comprehensive plan is saying we should do.
I'd never agreed with the hundred percent buildout. That was the one thing I had that I didn't like in the pattern book.
I think there's. Yeah.
But it should been capped at eighty percent.
So, yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean, that could be, so that, that's a provision. I believe it requires a special permit from the town board, and I think it's just within the public parking district in the DC one where that goes to overlap, needs a special permit from the town boards. I mean, you could very much, you could eliminate that.
Control that as well.
Yeah, I mean, you could eliminate that now if you wanted to.
But.
That's important.
Yeah, and the thing is with the uh, the five stories, pattern book, pattern book recommends four stories, right? So if we adopt that, we're, we're stuck with a four-story building.
The recommendation is that it should be codified, so I mean, whether or not you decide to move forward with that recommendation.
I think we're doing fine the way it is, you know, we, the people are using the pattern book, the setbacks, are you okay with that? I mean, they're, they're setting back the fourth story and the fifth story.
I mean, the, the buildings have gone, you know, we, we have, we have one building downtown, you know, the first large one that went up that, you know, didn't really sit well with a lot of people.
Which one is that?
The.
Southern.
Yeah, well, no, the uh, McDermott, the Gallagher.
Yeah, look, look, cause the town board at the time got a hold of it and destroyed it.
So I think we have subsequent projects, I believe we've very much learned aesthetically more pleasing, we've incorporated those setbacks.
We get good design out of the pattern book. Whether the pattern book itself needs to be tweaked, I think that's a.
So just use the design elements.
Maybe just take away the words codify and said, you know, it should be utilized as a, as a, as a tool.
Yes.
Yeah. Utilize the design elements, you know, and I, you know.
The original design of what McDermott was supposed to look like as opposed to what it looks like today is not the same.
It's, it's, it's three hundred, it's a hundred and eighty degree difference, the, the original design. I think you could do both.
Yes.
The, the pattern book was a recommendation. When the town board adopted it, they adopted the recommendations of the pattern book. When you put it to code, over time, we've had several drafts come to work sessions, public meetings, work with business advisory. And we made a lot of changes, so even in its current state, it's not identical, but it's pretty close. And some of the elements, I think, the town board would want to have for their downtown.
Yes.
The massing, the, the height of the first floor, the, the design of the windows. There's a lot of things I think you would want, so.
So it, it, you just take out the codify part.
I agree. If, if the town board, it, it, it was very clear, the town board really did not want a hundred percent lot coverage. And as to the five stories, the town board always gave an indication it was willing to work with that and maybe do the quote cupcake design where you setback, the fifth story is not visible from the road.
Wedding cake.
Wedding, wedding cake.
Wedding cake. I'm sorry, wedding.
Right. Wait, Miss Patenti, Miss Paten- I, Emery, I just wanted to say that if you codify it, now you're taking all those other variations out.
Well, I would, you can codify certain elements. You can codify certain elements, and I think that's what it says, cause we, you, like, like Emery said, it was adopting the recommendations. Your recommendations could change for whatever you're gonna codify.
Just take out the words codify and just say the pattern book should be used as a guiding document for developers. You don't need to put the word codify.
I would. I caution, because then it's almost useless.
Good.
You get more, I mean, it's, 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 it's a recommendation.
You can codify guidelines. You can codify written guidelines in the code. We have it in numerous other sections.
We have supplementary design guidelines in almost every zoning industry.
They need to be enforceable if, for certain instances, if that's what you wanna do. If it's a recommendation that you've adopted, how do we, how do we hold people to that?
I'm sorry, I, I, yeah.
If you've got a stubborn developer who absolutely wants to go forward with their design.
Thank you for sharing your pattern book, but I'm gonna do this building anyway.
Right.
What irks me is the fact that the hundred percent buildout, you know, that being recommended from the beginning.
Yeah.
Told me that who's ever looked, who's ever doing it was totally wrong, didn't understand the town when other pattern books in other towns when they're developing downtowns do just the opposite. They go to eighty percent. The reason is they believe that their downtown is gonna thrive and they want wider sidewalks. This is somebody who said, no, we're gonna go a hundred percent. This isn't really gonna work. You don't need wider sidewalks and that, but anyway.
So we could say study and codify. I think there's opportunity to dress up the language there.
Yeah, we can, we can figure something out and get back to you.
To study the pattern book and, and consider future codification.
All right, um, so I, I kinda.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. Oh, so again, short-term rentals, I feel like you would.
Yes, we're taking.
That'll admit.
You don't wanna beat a dead horse with Bush.
He's coming back, let's talk about it.
With the bush.
Um, ninety-five, there was a note that the uh, the Suffolk County Agricultural Lease Program, the name changed on that. That's a very quick fix.
Yeah, a good fix.
Um, ninety-eight talks about the Pecan River Community Zoning Districts, um, about CRC and PRC. Um, really relating to infrastructure being in place before those, any development in those districts come in. PRC is along West Main Street where you've got the Pecan River. Obviously, unless there's sewer infrastructure, you're not gonna see any real development happen down there.
And it, and like with PRC, you'd have to align with all of the DEC regulations, WSRR, wetlands.
Correct. Yeah.
And you didn't wanna have those um townhouses on the waterside.
Yeah.
You, you wouldn't have that.
All this recommends, you know, retreating from the riverfront.
Cause some people in their comments were concerned you're putting them on the water. No, they'd be on the other side.
I mean, you would, if someone were to come in today with any development along the riverfront, you, we would never approve something right down, you know, that just, that wouldn't happen. You, you need DEC permits, site plan, there's, the PRC zoning district has a fifty percent open space requirement, so you would never see a development right on the riverfront. It would be, it would be closer to West Main Street. You would never develop down by the riverfront.
Until we get the county off our sewer line and we can expand westward bound on West Main Street, that's true.
All right. Ninety-nine, all right.
Agritourism Resort.
Agritour- Tourism Resort.
Okay. I'm just gonna open up with this and state that we have hashed this around back and forth for a long time. We shelved it for a bit. It was brought back up because I had the understanding that farmers were now in favor of it. But I have to tell you, uh, I met Monday night, uh, along with Councilwoman Woski with the Long Island Farm Bureau. And the farmers are not on board with this whatsoever. There were approximately twenty farmers in the room and not a one of them supported this as is. Their concern is they want this to straightly, uh, straight mimic the agriculture law, Ag and Markets Law three oh one with no exceptions. They feel they're being restricted on what they can do, whether it's vertical farming or whatever, and nobody's knocking down the door for vertical farming. And I think vertical farming, in my opinion, is blown way out of proportion, uh, and it's never really gonna be here. I know there is somebody dabbling with it now, but it's just, it's not economically viable. Uh, so I have stated publicly many times, I support what the farmers support, and the farmers do not support this, so I cannot support this.
Are we talking about agritourism resort or vertical farming?
Agritourism resort, where it includes the restrictions of what the farmer can do.
Well, so that's the, that's the specifics of the, the, the code that we drafted, discussed, had those restrictions in there.
They feel restricted.
When you look at just the, just the language that's in here, it just, it, it doesn't get into the, the nuances of what they can and can't.
Correct.
Agritourism.
It really just more talks about the overarching concept of it. And I mean, you know.
Right, they weren't against the hotel, they were against the covenant.
The code restrictions, yes.
Yeah. Nobody spoke out against the resort part of it. I don't believe, I don't think anybody.
No, I actually asked if they were opposed to it and.
Yeah, nobody said, that's not our issue, that's not our real concern.
When Rob Carpenter wrote the letter, he had said he was for the agritourism, that's true, but not the restrictions.
Well, and, yeah, and the only restrictions are vertical farming, which I think we all spoke about openly on this board that we didn't wanna see log, these type of large structures on sound. Is there, is there another way to do it or mitigate it or put it inside such as?
So, let's talk, let's talk about.
Can I, can I just say?
Vertical farming has its own section, so we'll get to that, but let's just stick to.
Yeah. And can I just say something, one, one quick thing? The person who's building the hotel, who's going to lease to a farmer, has the ability to say, I don't want vertical farming.
But he doesn't control what happens on the property on either side of that property, so.
Yeah, but this nightmare about vertical farming, whoever created this nightmare should really do research on it. To the supervisor's point, one, there, that, that, it's not gonna proliferate. It ha- ha- it's been around for over twenty years. Hasn't proliferated anywhere. Most of them have gone out of business, so who's ever spreading this stuff about vertical farming should do their research and, and let me know who it is and I'll send them to the right people.
So let's, so we should just.
I think we should address that when we get to the part on vertical farming.
Yeah, let's bring, so, but, just to the, the section on page ninety-nine, talking about agritourism resort.
Just the comp plan.
It does not speak into the nuances, it just speaks generally to the concept of a agritourism resort.
Fantastic.
This.
So it doesn't, it doesn't, like, that's for, that's for code revision, that's for any draft.
Correct, correct.
My only problem with it is I think the minimum acreage should be lessened because, you know, I mean, we're just identifying hundred acre parcels. I'm happy if the minimum is seventy.
Well, but that, that, that limit, that limits the, the location, the number and location where these things could go.
Yeah, that was the idea.
To, to keep it.
We just wanna hash out because there was a lot of opposition during the cop plan hearing.
Okay.
As far as whether or not this section is going to stay in as a recommendation in the cop plan.
I would like it to stay.
I would like it to stay.
I would like this to stay.
All right.
But we have to, we have to address.
The nuts and bolts of the code, right, will come out as, as the code goes.
We'll write it with the code revision.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
Uh, page one oh one, um, couple of notes here relating to vertical farming on agricultural soils. Um, visual impacts, I mean, vertical farming is relatively new. Well, to, for us, for us, I, I, yes, for you, I know you, very worldly, but for us, it's sort of a concept, and there is very much a fear associated with it. That said, I will fully agree with what Councilman Kern said a couple of meetings ago. Uh, we went and visited a vertical farm that is in an existing potato barn. You cannot see it. Nobody has issue with that. It's sort of the, in, it, it's, it, this, the what if and what could be, like, sort of like legislating by fear of an unknown.
So then, then in the agritourism legislation that we've talked about, you can then just find a way to address it, that vertical farming will have to be captured in a, in a particular entity or method.
Yeah, that would have to come, that would, that would come through with that individual though.
Not stacked storage containers.
So the language, the language in the draft says, concerns about vertical farming include the visual impact of these structures. The town should consider clear guidance for the total size, setbacks, landscaping, et cetera, to minimize the visual impacts of these structures. I mean, I, I think that's a, that's a, that's a good recommendation. I mean, you can look at, there, there's examples of vertical farming containers that are architecturally enhanced, they have building materials on them, they're screened, you know.
They look like barns.
Or they're in barns, yeah.
And I think we should just, I know it says it in the draft that it should not be put on um lands where development rights are sold, and I think.
Uh, that you need, you're gonna need to check with Ag and Marcus and you're gonna need to check with chapter eight of Suffolk County because it's farming. And yeah, that's what, you're gonna need to check with that.
And the Ag and Market law says that vertical farming is allowed in the state of New York.
So, New York State Ag and Markets Law, uh, we have a current application before farmland uh on a preserved piece of property. New York State Ag and Market says it is a type, they're very careful with their language. It is a type of agricultural production, but they will defer to the entity who preserved the development rights.
Correct.
And the purpose and the language that was used when they preserved the land. New York State Ag and Markets Law makes it clear, they're not gonna come over the top. And it's the written document, the purpose of preservation that will dictate. So it's really important, kind of for the town board to, it is coming up now, and I, and vertical farming is very expensive. However, the amount of grant opportunities that are out there are extraordinary. The application that we have at farmland, he received over three million dollars of grant money for this project. So while it is expensive and we're not, we have yet to see the influx, the grant opportunities are out there.
Can I just ask one question, Emery? So agricult- vertical farming is a type of agricultural production, right, as I heard you just say? And isn't it currently north of twenty-five A, um, on Sound Avenue, or not twenty-five A, rather, north of Sound Avenue in R B eighty? That does not allow for agricultural production.
Production, it does, production does allow for farm operations.
Oh, okay. It's, I thought that was the catch.
And, and those that Greg referred to, I mean, I, I don't know if they're on preserved property or not, but it, it is a big decision for the town to make.
Can I, can I ask a, a question, Emery?
And it's limiting the amount of area that they're allowed to use for the vertical farming.
So, e- do you want, should I outline for the town board what farmland?
Can I also, can I ask another question also?
Well, I think Noah's, Noah, Noah's got a question, I think, for Emery.
I just wanted to know, um, you know, with the Ag and Markets Law, you know, we can't necessarily override, you know, they're allowed to conduct vertical farming, but my understanding is that the town still controls zoning and can regulate buildings.
Correct.
And um, you can control the size or, you know, allowance for, you know, a structure. Um, so you could say that, you know, for, for one, vertical farming, buildings should be limited to the existing FAR and setbacks of a principal building, that's one thing you should be able to say. And another is, you know, I think you can say if, if a, it, within a zoning code, if a property has been, if the development rights have been extinguished, then there's no more FAR for buildings. Is that, did that be correct or not correct?
That, that, that's the decision, that's the decision for the town board, really. All the preserved properties have D to development rights. There isn't one property this town has preserved that doesn't have prime agricultural soils, doesn't recite the fact that you preserved it because it has prime agricultural soils. It also recites to General Municipal Law, uh, two forty-seven, which is open space agriculture. It also recites to general municipal law, uh, two forty-seven, which is open space, agricultural vistas, unique environmental qualities, quote, agricultural soils. So anyway, I'll make it really quick because I don't wanna take up too much of your time. But Councilwoman Woski and I have been working with the farmland committee and, uh, what's his first name, Ron McGann?
Ryan.
Ryan McGann, uh, located a piece of preserved farmland with the assistance of Rob Carpenter, the old Rex Farr property, for a vertical farm. And McGann got all kinds of grant monies for it. So the farmland committee has struggled with it because there's a lot of pressure, oh, we should allow vertical farming. So, there, I'll just outline, their recommendations are, just a rough, they're recommending, the footprint of the vertical structure shall not exceed two percent of lot coverage. The vertical agricultural production shall include, include a portion of hybrid vertical farming. That's wherein a part of it is grown vertically, because vertical farming is controlled, uh.
There's no sun, there's no soil.
It's a, it's controlled environment farming without the use of soil.
With the light.
That's all it is, without the use of soil. So, they, the second request they have, it must include a hybrid portion of farming where you, you take the controlled environment farming and transplant it into the ag soils.
On the same property?
Same property. The, uh, uh, vertical farm must be situated with minimum front yard setbacks of a thousand feet and all other setbacks shall meet twice the minimum required rear and side yard. The vertical farm shall be located and configured in such a way to protect and provide open space views of agriculture from all external roadways and minimize visual and potential stormwater impacts to its adjacent residential uses. Maximum height of proposed structure shall not exceed thirty-three point five, code allows for thirty-five. So they wanted to kind of bring it down a little from the max to under the max. Um, and the structure shall be designed in such a manner as to minimize and mask industrial container and foster typical agricultural barn structure. Prohibition to locate any additional structures located on the property for the purpose of or related to the vertical farm operation. Uh, the proposed vertical structures may not be used for cultivation of marijuana, cannabis, or hemp, except and limited to two percent of the total area of the vertical structures could be used or, could be used for research and development. Um, and access and means of ingress and egress to the vertical farm shall be by single curb cut and single farm road. So they put together all of these things, so it wouldn't look like an industrial use on a farmland.
I think, I mean.
Cool, cool. I, I have one question, who, who preserved the rights, was it Riverhead Town or was it Suffolk County?
Riverhead Town.
No, okay, so, and you say that, and I'm gonna say this, you're familiar with this, the chapter eight of Suffolk County law?
Very.
All right, so you know what the lot coverage is when they preserve land?
Absolutely.
What is it?
Their coverage, well, their coverage differs. If you have greenhouse structures, you could go to forty. However, local zoning trumps.
I, I, Emery, I don't disagree with you.
The town of Riverhead is fifteen percent. And even if an application came, came into the county of Suffolk and the county approved it, guess what happens, Bob? That application comes to the town of Riverhead because local zoning trumps.
Emery, I'm with you, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure you understand that, so, cause I, I worked on this for a long time.
When you read that, so.
Bob, I worked on, so, so, chapter eight of the Suffolk County Charter.
Okay.
For the last seventeen years, so, fully burst.
I'm not, here's my question to you, okay? I'm not here to dispute, okay?
Yes.
My question to you is, so, when a project comes to Riverhead where the county has preserved the land, and this is for now and for future, okay, because, all right, whether it's hydroponics or whatever the hell it is, all right? Um, because this Frankenstein vertical farming thing to me is just a lot of BS, but here's my question to you. So if the county preserved land on a farm in Riverhead, we allow fifteen percent lot coverage. And you're telling me the farmland wants to reduce that to two percent?
No, 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 to be crystal clear.
Oh, I'm sorry, who does?
The vertical, the high tower portion would be limited to two. The rest of the property, absolutely farmed. Could you have additional farm structures? Absolutely, but not vertical.
I'm definitely not, I think it's ridiculous, I'm not in favor, but I, I totally agree with you because most of these vertical farms, they do sustain themselves on grants. And there's not enough grant money to make these things proliferate all over the place.
Well, it was the farmland, they've struggled with this and that's why I'm sharing it with the board. Because the parcel was preserved for its prime agricultural soils, so.
I, I think what you wrote, and I'm gonna commend Councilwoman Woski for, for working with the Farm Bureau because I think that actually bridges the major gap, I think, in some of the, some of the concerns between, you know, the agritourism bill and the farming community, that I think if you implement something of that and you coincide those bills together, you may just bridge that, that gap of, of the concern in the farming. But, okay, you allow it, but with, with, you know, the restrictions put forth that explain how it's gonna be built, how it's constructed, that basically when you read that, that tells me, guess what? Nobody's stacking up multiple containers on, on, you don't have this major ISO going down. And it also tells me that you're gonna preserve more than likely the frontage of, of that, or the agricultural aesthetic view of it. So I think you put that forth along with the agritourism bill and now you've, you've bridged a major gap and maybe you, we can bring everybody together on it.
All we can do is try.
I thank you for all of your work.
And, and the plan doesn't, like, the plan literally, we're talking, just talking about, you know, keeping this passage in, then we're not talking about codifying any two percent, if, if that's not in the plan right now. So, are we okay with the language in here as it exists for vertical farming?
It's in the same tenor as what they recommend.
Screen, I'm all, I'm, you know, I'm all for screening, that's about it.
True. Um, so, I just, before we go on, there was a comments, questions about agrivoltaics in there.
At that same page?
Yeah, so it just talks about, uh, number two, principally, in addition, the town board could provide flexibility for agrivoltaic projects, which provide for a dual use of production of vegetables or other crops. Uh, the approach allows for the prioritization of a site's continued agricultural use as a project may be designed to maximize both renewable energy production and crop yields.
This is talking about, um, the, an increase from the hundred and ten percent maximum. And it talks about, uh, giving some flexibility for the town board to allow for some additional solar use in addition to what they need for their own use. But not necessarily turning it into a commercial operation, but, but some flexibility.
I'm fine with it. You're not gonna see much of it. If you see anything, I mean, it's really the cattle and sheep and stuff.
All right, so we're moving on. Uh, I think the next note is on page one ninety-five.
Can we just, can we just go back to page one eighty-three? Because it just pertains to the, uh, my earlier conversation where in one point seven, it says, uh, revise solar regulations and incentives to ensure they are compatible with surroundings. And then it says reduced, reducing allowable coverage. I'd like that to be removed, because that's, that's exactly what, talking about what we said before against it.
It's in the plan.
Page one eighty, oh, oh, one eighty-three in the plan.
Page one eighty-three, yeah. And I mean, we talked about it, so we all agree you're gonna clarify it, but then further down the road you go, we're gonna reduce the allowable coverage.
That's a good catch.
I think this can consider.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I've worked on both of the large, you know, solar farm applications, I mean, I'd have no, I have no problems with the current solar code as it is, so I mean, if we wanna strike that.
Strike that reducing allowable.
Reducing allowable coverage, but keep in requiring additional buffers and landscaping.
Definitely want the buffers there and I want them to be firm buffers, that, I wanna make sure that they're in there maintained, but.
I, I'm on, I'm on board with that, it's the rest of the board, okay, with, we can strike that. So Noah, you got that on page one eighty-three and section one point seven, we're gonna strike reducing allowable coverage?
No response from the connect.
He was diligently writing, also he's got it.
No, you got that, right?
I got it, I got it.
Do we have a count before we go to one ninety-five? And one ninety, it says.
What about on page one eighty-five, four point four? This is, uh, reduce waste promotion circular economy, waste management practices, four point five. Um, regions exploring, including newer technologies such as anaerobic digesters.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't support that, I don't know if the board.
I absolutely support it.
I don't know if the board wants to keep that in there.
I think the recommendation is that Riverhead should continue to monitor evolving waste processing technologies and regional solutions.
Just kind of a little bit what we touched on today with your emergency, emerging technologies.
Yeah.
Committee. I don't think it gives a strong recommendation of.
No, it doesn't say.
Do this or do that, just consider all these technologies to.
Should just continue monitoring, yeah.
Yeah.
We keep producing garbage there, we'll, you will, we will need to find ways to address that. So, again, I, I think that's just a pretty open-ended.
Okay.
Recommendation to explore alternative methods. We, we good to move on to one nine, one ninety-five, again, which five hundred unit cap. Um, this says it would be reasonable for the town to reassess the cap once development in the pipeline is complete, given its significant demand for development and the continued need to meet other housing, economic, community goals.
Uh, there's the charter school is the first note.
Right.
Industrial zones, which we already, the board already agreed to strike.
Yep.
Go ahead, Greg, sorry.
Um, again, so the five hundred unit cap, reassessing it, I, I think we've heard from the board, we wanna kind of sort of take a look at that on an annual basis.
So, that's the question on the charter schools, we're not allowing an industrial zone. So then we're gonna keep, are we gonna keep ending up in situations where they wanna go by residential, like on Sound Avenue?
They're already permitted in that zone.
By special permit. By special permit, so maybe we should make industrial zone by special permit. Should there be a zone we identify that works out well? So we have some flexibility there, why are we gonna, why are we gonna box ourselves in if they, you know, find a spot that works?
Well, I think because a lot of residents of the town came forward and said that, um, the industrial areas help us economically. So they don't want the charter school to be there because they would not be helping us with our taxes.
And I don't, I don't disagree with them on that, I don't disagree with the ones that didn't want it by their homes. So where do they end up?
I mean, there's a, there's several zoning districts in town that do permit it.
By special permit, yeah, so you consider it.
Either at school, there's several districts that either as it writes or by special permit. Again, in the APZ, school, private schools are allowed by special permit. Again, there may be a more appropriate location in the APZ. The APZ is our largest by far zoning district in terms of just land area, so there may be a more appropriate location within that zoning district.
So good to strike it from industrial?
I would do it by special permit.
Strike it out.
If they want, you know, that's just me.
I should just strike.
I think that's what we're, right now, we're saying that it, it would be allowed by special permit, but I think, my recollection at the, um, public hearing was, um, um, I, I think the public was, you were told, they were told that it was gonna be removed.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and then when we do something on induc, that's industrial, industrial, and the public is gonna come out against it, so. Okay, anyway.
And what about the, uh.
We'll cross it. Oh, assisted living is still in there, uh, assisted living on.
By special permit in any district, where are you?
That's still in, uh, number one on page one ninety-five. Do we wanna leave assisted living in?
I do.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And this is in addition to the overlay.
Yeah, so this is in dis, yeah.
All right, moving on and getting, getting close to the end here. All right, again, so on page one ninety-nine, there's a lot of notes here relating to, I mean, I feel like this touches on short-term rentals, which I feel like we addressed.
Yep.
Um, vertical farming, vertical farming should be a permitted use.
What are you gonna do with short-term rentals before you go party out? Like, I, I just, where it says here, on the other hand, allowing short-term rentals can be a boost in Spain, look, I don't believe in that.
Yeah.
Well, does it, the, the, but so, just generally speaking throughout the document, where you wanna keep the twenty-eight, twenty-eight day.
Yes.
You're generally not in favor of the, yes, short-term.
With one exception.
One exception.
Good, that's fine.
Um, you can eliminate it and then just write, we have a council, we disagree.
I mean, and I've said this a hundred times, I'm a hypocrite because I use Airbnbs all over the place and not necessarily for a week, sometimes for a long weekend, and I think they're fantastic. I just don't want them in my backyard.
It's great for tourism.
In our town.
I have them in my neighborhood and every weekend I see different people walking.
Yep.
They pay a lot of taxes.
Right. You know. Takes away from the stability and protective feeling you have in your neighborhood, transient people coming and going.
I think it fits in different communities, I just don't think we have that community to sustain it. It's different if I'm going down, you know, and I'm going down to Bureau Beach and I, I tend to be on the community, that's where they're designed, they're tourist communities, I don't, you know.
For that, yeah.
For that use.
Or Bob, we could just ban marriages because these seem to be bachelorette and bachelor parties that are creating most of the problems. So if we just ban marriages in the town of Riverhead.
Well, I think we've done a good job with the noise code and, you know, we've done some good jobs with code to really clamp down on who's ever, you know, it's gonna take a while, but.
Well, it's gonna take more, we know we gotta add more code, uh, code enforcement officers also, so.
And again, we have hotels here and by allowing a shorter term rental, that's hurting our hotels.
Correct.
I just wanna point out that banning marriages would be a substantive change for the GEIS.
Come on, Noah, think of something else.
The next one on vertical farming is consistent.
Yeah, vertical farming in industrial zones, it's saying it should be permitted there, which, again, I, I think we, on the staff end, we agree with that and support that. Um, again, whether it's allowed, vertical farming on farmland, development rights land intact.
Yep. And then number one, um, the concerns about visual impacts, that's pretty much what we've, we've said, how to address it.
Renewable energy, again, touches on the, uh, the hundred and ten percent threshold and, you know, being able to power your farm by renewable energy. We're good on there. Moving on, two oh one. I think that two oh one, I think that's just a hangover from.
From last night?
I, I think that's a, that's continued from page one ninety-nine, so that just continues.
Two oh three, or is this?
Two oh three is the next one.
TDRs.
Two oh three is about the sending areas and receiving areas.
So.
Um, areas in RA eighty north of Sound are currently only designated as receiving, meaning that property owners can buy development rights from the APZ and take them into the RA eighty, but they cannot sell development rights. Now, there are significant large tracts of land in the RA eighty zoning district.
I, I think they should be able to sell development rights, to your point, just from what I've seen with, um, uh, you know, what we've seen in pre-planning, like people wanna do on the north side of Sound Avenue.
Well, also like RB eighty isn't either, it's not a sending or receiving right now. So like, the draft plan recommends to make it a sending area, again, acknowledging that there are large tracts of farmlands there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we had some comments about the RA eighty being both sending and receiving, um, during the public hearing, so I'm just trying to get the boards, uh, thinking about.
It's a receiving district, I think there is a little confusion about what it's a receiving district for. It's a receiving district for basically, single-family homes to be on one acre instead of two acre zones, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
And so it's not a receiving district for a tremendous amount of development. Uh, you know, the density is still very low and that came out of, from my understanding. Uh, you know, the density is still very low and that came out of, from my understanding, was kind of a, a compromise at some point when, when the area was made a little bit less dense. But allowing property owners to recapture some of that value that may have been lost. Uh, you know, this was done a while ago, so I can kind of speculate.
So I, I think, I think what Noah was referring to is when the, you know, in two thousand and four, when we rezoned, we went from one acre up to the two acre zoning. The TDR is still calculated at one TDR per one acre. So they were, they sort of, while they, the base allowable development in terms of residential density on those properties was essentially cut in half, the value in a TDR was kept at one acre.
And, and I think some people had issue, took issue with it being both ascending and receiving area. Um, you know, we've looked through it, it's not an issue, we don't see it as an issue, you know, both legally and from a planning framework. But we understand that it could be a little bit confusing. So, um, you know, we'll do our best to explain it, you know, better in the plan, but, um, there's always gonna be a little bit of confusion maybe about that, um, because it makes sense that why people would want it to be ascending district considering you have a lot of farms. I think people might not understand why it's receiving district, but that, that is what it is right now. And there, there was a, a reason for it. Um, I think people might just not understand that.
I mean, the fundamental thing with TDR just from a philosophical standpoint, it's a transfer of development right. It's not just a strict preservation. It's not extinguishing. You are transferring development rights from one area, putting it in another. You know, like I went back and looked at the oh-four comp plan. Rob Pike got up and said, he's like, now that's the tough political sell with transfer of development rights. People have to understand that, you know, in order to preserve land over here in, you know, in the farm belt, that you may see a denser development elsewhere in someone's backyard, like the old school yard, the old rail yard, something like that. So it's not a, while it is a preservation tool, it transfers density. So there will be denser development elsewhere, preserving land elsewhere in the town. I mean, that's just at a fundamental level.
Just, I mean, I, I know everybody knows this, but I always just feel the need to say it, that the farmers took such a beating with the two acre up zoning and the TDRs were put into place to help them and they failed miserably. And that's why anything we can do to increase sending and receiving areas and make this work better for the farmers, I totally favor.
I do as well.
Yeah.
I do too.
Can we just go back to two oh two real quick? I'm sorry. About Edgar Avenue, the, the last sentence, um, says that the Village Center District could be considered for this pro- uh, for this parcel. What is it now?
Uh, well, so the Village Center, I believe, is the, the deli down there on the south side. Right now, I believe it's RB forty, Residence B forty.
I think you're right.
Yeah, it's which, I, I mean, so again, when you look at what's permitted in Village Center, I mean, it's, it's small scale commercial. I mean, it's a recommendation whether or not the board wants to go and, you know, make those zoning changes. That's a future action.
Okay, I just, several times throughout the plan, I just seem to find that it says could be, it's never defined as will be.
Yeah, that, I think that's important.
And that concerns me.
I think that's important though, because it doesn't, it doesn't tie the board down that you have to do that. I mean, leaving it open-ended, if it, if you study it and it doesn't make sense to change it, then don't do it.
Okay.
I think, and, and also I, I think the intent of this kind of, um, uh, section in the plan is to talk about there are several areas where the existing uses don't necessarily align with the zoning. And we, we provided some examples. I think we received a little criticism because they were all, happened to be in the general same area of town, I think closer to Jamesport. That was more of a just a happen, happenstance. Um, but we just wanted to point out examples of where you have, you know, residential properties and industrial zones that could be cleaned up. Commer- you know, historically, commercial zones and residential zones. Um, and, you know, other types of things where if they wanted to continue or expand their properties or uses in, in ways that the community might want, they wouldn't be permitted to do so under the existing zoning. So they're just examples. There are probably many other examples. We just, these are, again, illustrative.
Yeah, maybe, no, maybe in the language we can say that, because it says the following areas have been identified for special consideration. Maybe we can just identify that these are, you know, a few samples throughout the town and, you know, dozens if not, and probably more exists, but these are just the examples where, you know, we're looking at.
Cause I mean, right now, if they wanted to expand, they're non-conforming, so they would need a special permit.
Everything has to go back to the town.
But there, there is a mechanism for them to expand right now.
You know, like the reality, uh, I apologize.
No, no, go ahead, cause I do wanna address.
Well, so I just like tho- tho- those existing commercial uses down at the south end of Edgar Avenue. I mean, the reality, no one's gonna buy a commercial property, knock down a commercial building and build a single-family. Uh, you know, that just doesn't really make sense from a economics.
Yeah, but I wanna ensure, because one of the problems that I have, we seem to locate everything, like for example, all the shopping on fifty-eight. So we, 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 you know, we cause a heart attack in traffic there, that we spread commercial out and that's.
We also don't wanna create urban sprawl either.
Well, what is that up to do with the commercial?
If, if you expand the commercial outside of the commercial corridor, you know, the whole purpose of sort of concentrating it into one area is to prevent urban.
On an industrial, I, I agree with you on an industrial sense where you make, but in this case here, like this at Edgar, there's an auto, there's an auto body. And there's a marine. That is perfect. It's in the perfect location. It's next to the water, right? So I would just leave it the way it is. I don't know why I would, you know, it got changed to residential back in the two thousand and three comp plan, which I'm, you know, no.
I don't know if it was changed to residential or, or, you know, I think it just, it just is.
It is.
Oh, it's always been?
It's always been.
Okay, sorry about that. I was told differently. Okay, sorry about that. I'll just.
Yeah, the original owner of the deli actually lived like right behind it.
And, and this is an issue, you know, every, every town has properties like this, you know, when the zoning is done, it's done for large swaths of area and it's not always parcel-specific. And certain parcels, you know, kind of, you know, it, it just needs to be cleaned up from time to time. And, uh, so we're just saying, just acknowledging that and, and, um, pointing out a few properties that, you know, could be considered and there, and there are probably several others as well.
So I just wanna reiterate, you just said that these are protected.
Yes, they legally exist as pre-existing non-conforming uses now. So they can maintain that.
So if somebody was to sell their piece, it can, and, and somebody else.
They have to continue the same use.
The same.
They can continue, so a pre, a pre-existing non-conforming use can continue on that same lot.
What's it mean?
Held in single and separate ownership. That's defined in our code. There is a mechanism in our code to allow the zoning board of appeals to go from one pre-existing non-conforming use to another pre-existing non-conforming use. One, one example of that recently would be the old Luxford Mag Tech building at the corner of Elton Street and East Main Street. Uh, that was an old manufacturing building. They converted a portion of that to, I believe it's Sid Harvey. They're an HVAC wholesaler. Um, you know, the zoning board looks at specific criteria. Will the new use be detrimental in terms of, you know, neighboring residences, impacts? So there is a mechanism to go from one pre-existing non-conforming use to another non-conforming use in that zoning district. So it does get, you know, the town retains a bit of control over what can go there, can't go there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so two oh three, I think we've touched on, that's the TDR sending districts.
Two oh six.
Two oh six. So we're gonna have comments here. So, uh, number one is referring to CRC zoning districts. Uh, so in a bit of acknowledgement that Suffolk County Department of Health Service requirements will still apply. So those, those are your, your allowable sanitary densities. And the likelihood that you're not gonna get significant density without infrastructure, whether it's connection to public sewer or an onsite sewage treatment plant.
The, okay, so one of the comments, one of the things in CRC is that we're requiring the use, and I gotta find it, development rights, right? If you wanna do.
That was one of the, that was one of the things we looked at, to increase the density.
Right, but that, but in no one's zone, you can, I have to get my notes, you have to do that. And that was a concern.
Well, I mean, but that's not, I mean, you, that's not true. You can use TDRs to increase residential density in, I believe, RA forty and RA eighty. So you, there is a residential TDR component to increase densities. CRC would just result in a more dense development than a one acre or two acre zoning district.
All right, well, I'll go over that another time. All right, I don't wanna.
PRC zoning district, comment number three. Um, again, this is, you know, in the PRC, that's West Main Street. You'd provision of TDRs, again, would be restricted unless they have the sewer infrastructure in place.
How does the board feel about that?
This was kind of part of the BOA study years back where they talked about, uh, giving better, more density on the north side of West Main Street uh, to save the south side closer to the river. So it kinda makes sense to me still.
We can work more of that language from the BOA study in there too.
I mean, that's, that's the side you wanna live on, right? On the riverside.
Comment number two was again for ag tourism resorts. I believe the board wants to keep the ag tourism language in there. Uh, comment about removing the cap on the use of TDR for residential. Cap may inhibit the intent and suggested TDR programs. The town should consider changing or eliminating the cap as the threshold's approached. So again, for TDR, change it to yearly review or something, right?
I would say annual review of the cap and maybe the TDR program itself, just specifically for this chapter.
No, nothing on two oh seven, two oh eight.
Yeah, we already sort of went through ADUs. I think we're at a consensus for that is.
Two oh nine, I think is the last one, right?
Yep. Can I just ask a question of like, one of the things I have talked to you guys about in planning and wanna change the code, but can we in any way reference that the town may opt to consider in its future developments, um, incentive zones? So we, we've come, we've, we've talked about incentive zoning and I don't have the specifics, model, location, they like, but I know that Governor Pataki wrote the program many years ago for the state. I think it's, you know, when a project comes along, if something doesn't fit in the parameters of the zoning and something, but somehow a way or another that it's, it's entirely beneficial through community benefit funding or other types of funding investments, you know, I, I would like to see some type of reference without.
Yeah.
Drastically changing it and just simply saying that the town should be considering.
And incentive zoning is already established under town law. I think it's two, section two sixty-one, I believe. Uh, I mean, it's already a tool in the municipality's toolbox. I've, I've looked at some other towns. They have implemented incentive zoning and incentive zoning is basically, you know, you, your, your town, town board would authorize density bonuses in, in, in allowing density bonuses in return for community benefits, whether it was open space preservation or some other, you know, prescribed community benefit.
Somebody, the zoning project doesn't fit, but if somebody comes in and it's for the old, they can prove that it, you know, provides benefits for the overall community. The town make exceptions to allow something to take place.
Yeah, I think that's, no, I think we can add that for, in somewhere in future land use in terms of just referencing.
Yeah, yeah, um, I think we can add it to a recommendation. I think it was something that we had discussed briefly about ag tourism resort. Um, and I actually have some text where I said, you know, as an alternative to the use of TDR, town can consider other zoning tools such as incentive zoning, which could be used to leverage developments, provide community benefits within the area. With this type of zoning tool, there should be a clear rational, rationale between the development impacts and the provided benefits. Um, and, and that's all kind of provided in incentive zoning. It just, it can't be used for, you know, money to go into general coffers or something like that. It, it would, it would need, there needs to be a nexus between what you're asking and what you're providing for that area. But we can add that.
I just say, I like to reference it, just, it, it sends a message to me when somebody's reviewing the comp plan and tells them like, there's potential here. So if it's for the overall good of the community.
Does the board have anything else?
Yes, just one quick thing, the definitions of warehouses.
We have that, that's in future land use to update our definitions and our use table.
Right.
As a recommendation.
I just wanted to make sure we discuss that. We're all on board with that, because that, that's a must, must be done.
Yeah, that's a must be done. I think there's a lot of uses within the town that we do not explicitly define. Um, that's one major thing that we definitely wanna do when we amend our codes to.
Good.
General code clean.
Yes, yep.
I, I have one, one more thing on West Main Street.
Yes.
And I've asked for this, you know, I mean, and I don't say this begrudgingly, but a while back. And that's the west side of Main Street up against the, um.
On the riverside?
Uh, uh, no, up against the railroad track.
Okay.
Right now, what, what I'd just see there is for that to be light industrial. Um, where, because it's light industrial there already, it's spot, it's spot, you know, spot.
It's industrial C. Are we talking in the vicinity of the gas station and the Dodge dealership down there on West Main Street?
Yeah, but a little bit further west than that, but all, all the way to Blackman's, you know, uh, to me should all be, is, that's industrial C?
No, that's.
No, there's a, the, the Dodge dealership, that, that vicinity out there, that's industrial C, but after that, it moves to PRC. I don't know that the board necessarily, if we're talking about having that area be like, more like residential, middle housing, do you really want industrial development?
There's already industrial there. This is, if you look, I've looked, when you look at that, there's a house, then there's industrial, industrial, industrial.
Yeah, but that industrial is pre-existing non-conforming.
We're also up against the allowable uses in the WSRR.
Yeah, in DEC, yeah, part, was it six, 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 the table? And I think it's, is it a recreation designation there? Or is it, I think it's recreation.
I think, so I believe that was actually, I think I just looked into this with Emery, a lot of that, that section, the Blackman was made to be a WSRR community designation. That was something that the town actually basically, there's a.
Had to leverage the DEC.
There, there's a, there's an allowance in the Wild Scenic Recreational Rivers Code. So the town basically had to go to the DEC to designate that as a community designation, to allow, to allow the construction of a new Blackman plumbing supply warehouse.
This just tripped something in my mind. Uh, county legislator Stark met with me and asked, the county owns the old Jesky's, uh, Jesky Fish Store on West Main Street on the south side. And they're looking to have that demolished and they're wondering about the town's ability to be able to do same. So I said I would discuss it with the board and just, just boarded up, cause that, when we were talking about that area. So it's just something to think about. We'll have to have further discussions on it.
That's on the west side of?
It's on the south side of West Main Street. It's boarded up now.
Boarded up.
It's really in bad shape and it's just basically.
Been boarded up for twenty-five years.
From, from back into the, into the river and it needs to come down.
Here's my concern about what you're speaking about, Bob, with allowing more industrial on, on West Main Street there. The goal that I see down the road in the future is for the riverfront to have nice homes, some restaurants, kind of to further out to connect to Tanger, where it's a, it's a nice.
It should be a transitional zone.
Yeah, it's like, that's like the entryway into our downtown. And I think that having an abundance of industrial um, properties all lined up on one side of the street, that it would ruin it for the other side of the street. So I don't mind it being spaced out, but to make that whole area industrial.
I would say the, the parts that are currently industrial C are gonna be changed to light industrial.
That's what I, that's where I'm going.
But the areas that are PRC are going to remain PRC. And, you know, whether or not the industrial businesses there are, you know, legal or not, um, that's another question, but the, the goal is to maintain the PRC zoning. We have a lot of good uses, I think, in there. There are some that need to be tweaked a little bit, some definitions that need to be tweaked.
The PRC in general, very, it allows wholesale business, which in our code is. Essentially, anything that's not detrimental to the environment is a very.
Yeah, I'm not talking about any kind of like big manufacturing. There's an auto body on that side, right? It's already industrial built. I'm talking, I'm talking about light industrial, cause it exists, right? And there are homes over there too, but I don't know how many people will wanna build another home on the railroad tracks. You know, that's, so I'm just looking at, um, light industrial. And I'm not talking about heavy manufacturing. There's no space to do heavy manufacturing.
Yeah, but PRC also allows retail, it allows restaurants. It's, I don't think PRC, there's actually a residential component in there, which is something that we're trying to explore through the comp plan. explore through the cop plan because the purpose and intent include, you know, it wants to include an array of commercial and residential uses, yet we don't allow residential uses there. But we do, there are quite a number of permitted uses under PRC.
This is the one where they were speaking about the townhouse option possibly in the PRC.
Well, folks, word, are you comfortable right now?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
What a great job you guys have done.
What will be the process, you don't want me asking, so you guys will make the updated version, you'll submit it to us to kind of again, take a glance at it?
Yeah.
Is it gonna just be a red line version so they can easily identify?
So what I was thinking is we would give you the document, like a clean version of the PDF and then maybe a Word document that has the kind of strikeout changes. So it's a little bit clearer because it'll be tough to format it properly with the red line in the, in the PDF. But we'll make it clear what was changed and we'll highlight everything so you can see it in our next pass.
No, I just wanna, I want to thank you and BFJ because this made, this task for us to do today required obviously tons and tons of reading and note taking and everything else that we all put in. Denise used up every sticky note that we have in the town of Riverhead on hers. But the process in which you did this and how you supplied it and put it all together and presented it to us really helped us tremendously and I, I think the public will be thankful too at the end of the day. So we appreciate it and thank you for how you did this for us.
Yes, I would just like to say, I loved the charts and graphs. I thought they were very easy to follow and read. It's a tremendous tool for everyone in the town to look at and see how the town has developed. It's terrific.
But I will say this, I don't want to see you again for another fifteen years after this.
Well, if you need us again, we're around. Yeah, thank you and thank you to the planning staff again for, we, you know, we, we met with them or we're continuing to meet with them every week. You know, for as much time as needed and without the kind of constant back and forth, it's tough to do these big projects. And so it really has been a lot of work on their part as well as ours and so we're thankful to have good teammates and a partnership with the town.
Thank you, Noah. Thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have. Now, where are you going? Matters surrounding special permit for three seventy-four Main Road Aquaball and Greg. We're gonna put our claws into you and keep you up here with it. Jim Jones, come on up. If I leave, I'm probably not coming back, so no, you better keep me here.
I took a leak about the applicant and Ryan Winter from V H P, he's a traffic consultant.
Hey, Justin, can we get the, the eye in the sky, please? If we could zoom in on this. All right, good. Can we get out a little bit? Out, add a little more. Thank you. Yeah. All right, so this is an update on a special permit application that has been before the board a couple of times. There's a few new members on the board that may not have seen this before. This is a proposed special permit application to construct a professional office at three seventy-four Main Road, which is on the northeast corner of Main Road and Union Avenue. Subject property is about three and a half acres. They're proposing a fifteen thousand square foot, one-story professional office related parking drainage improvements. This application has been before the board, both the town board and the planning board for work sessions and discussions before. There were previous versions. There's been previous design professionals and previous project expeditors working on this.
Was it not originally a two-story proposal?
It's, that, so yes, it's gone, it's gone through a couple of iterations. One was a two-story proposal that was shut down.
Not like that.
There was a question, so there is a design, like a supplementary guideline in the town code, which states that for properties more than three acres, the building, the development shall be in a campus-style development.
Right.
One of the prior design professionals and expeditors had come in and we asked both the town board and the planning board, I think this was back in August, August of twenty twenty. They offered two designs. One was a single-story building, very similar to what you've seen here. The other was a multiple campus-style development. At that time, both the town board and the planning board preferred the one-story, single building. The thought being it keeps the development further away from the residences to the north of the development. So that's why, you know, the applicant at that time or directed them to sort of go forward with the one-story, a single building located closer to Main Road. So the zoning is rural corridor, RLC zoning use district where professional office is permitted by special permit from the town board. We did classify the action as a type one action pursuant to secret back in February of twenty twenty-two. We did have the applicant prepare a traffic impact statement in order to analyze the cumulative impacts. Now, there are separate applications for, there's two vacant parcels on the northwest corner of Main Road and Union. We had the applicant prepare a traffic impact study that looked at the cumulative traffic impacts from both of those developments at that Main Road and Union Avenue intersection. They did prepare that, uh, traffic study dated February twenty twenty-three.
Do you want him to talk about it, Ryan Winter? He can talk about the traffic study.
Sure, so the traffic study, as Greg mentioned in the conference, not only three seven four, but two other properties to be developed on the west side of Union, all with access directly onto Union, nothing on Main Road. So our traffic study considered the new intersection for the driveways, Main Road at Union and also CR one oh five at, at Union on the north end to see what, and what if any mitigation would be required. So as a basis of that study, it was determined that there were minimal traffic impacts, but there was consideration for a traffic signal at this location to ease some of the additional traffic that would be using that intersection, especially coming off Union onto Main. Obviously, traffic is fairly heavy on Main and the gaps and being able to turn on off is challenging.
See a left-hand turn lane on twenty-five two going into this.
Right.
Was recommended.
Yep.
Good. Yeah, so, so when we, when we look at impacts for a project, you know, the goal of planning and development is not to make sure there's never another car on the road. It's to mitigate the impacts from those measures. So based on the, you know, the signalization and the DOT did approve that signal at that intersection and the.
The design has been approved and basically just, the permit is ready to be pulled for that, but we have not.
We have to kind of.
We want to get through this process.
Yeah, you get through, get through a special permit and a site plan for you.
You want approval first before you build the traffic line.
Yes.
So I do note, so this is just one application and I do want to just bring this up to the board for, so that you can see what we're talking about. So a few weeks ago, Matt Charters came before the board with a proposed amendment to the town code relating to the use of pervious pavers on a site. So this application right now, it, it's the proposed impervious surface coverage is about twenty-three point nine percent. The maximum permitted in RLC is twenty-five percent. So right now, the application does not need a variance. But they are proposing, so on this plan here in this bubbled area, essentially the entire supply of parking, with the, with the exception of the drive aisles and the handicap stalls and accessible aisles are all being provided by pervious pavers. Again, so it does not need a variance in the code. But if those were, if the town board moved forward with that amendment and this was considered, you know, if we considered these pervious pavers to be counting towards lot coverage, it would, it would probably be about forty percent. Now, the, the RLC, the twenty-five percent is a very low restriction. I do note that this application is not looking to exceed their building lot coverage. They're not exceeding the allowable floor area. But the use of pervious pavers in this application does really, i- i- it's being used to permit the construction of a much larger building than would be allowable if they were using the, you know, the impervious calculation. Probably if, if, if you had to comply with the zoning code at the twenty-five percent, you'd probably end up with like a six thousand square foot building, which would reduce both the size of the building, the amount of required parking. I did note though, that when you look at the northwest corner, those two existing office buildings on the northwest corner, I did a rough calculation just looking at GIS. These lots are both at about forty percent impervious, you know, surface coverage between their parking and their buildings. So the twenty-five percent is just not, it, it's not in keeping with that existing level of development on that northwest side. So I just wanted to bring it up for the board. It's, when we, when we talk about a code revision, it's tough to consider it until you actually see the results of what could be, you know, developed.
That was, as you recall, I appeared at that and I spoke and, and I understand the intent of the projects that are above their lot coverage, above their FAR, using impervious surface calculation when you're already going to the zoning board for FAR and building lot coverage. I just didn't want a project that did conform to building lot coverage and FAR to be captured in the new code amendment. What, what do you, and, and the one thing I did suggest when I was up at the podium was perhaps maybe that's something, if you do pass that code amendment, you say that if you don't meet your building lot coverage and your FAR, you can't use impervious pavers to bring down your impervious surface calculation. So that's up to the board to decide. I don't know if we're gonna get through a public hearing before both boards, before you enact that. Because once you enact that, then I have to go to the zoning board for a public hearing on impervious surface calculation. So it's a timing issue. But what about land banking? I mean, if you look, we have a hundred spaces that we're providing and the code requires a hundred spaces. I don't think we're gonna need a hundred spaces. I do represent a lot of other medical uses and they're, they're just not using all those parking spaces. What do you think about land banking to take out an aisle maybe?
Well, so I mean, so land banking, I mean, land banking just requires, you know, you, the, the board, the reviewing board, they still would have to provide them if they needed to be built out. So it doesn't necessarily change, like.
They could still say grass.
If you wanted to land bank this area, it could potentially still be built out. So the main, the main point with that impervious versus pervious code revision is when you're driving past a site, whether it's pervious pavers or asphalt, it doesn't really change the amount of development on the site. You know, it's still hardscape. It is still development. And again, if, you know, in a case like this, I mean, twenty-five percent is low. So, you know, when I looked at, I, I'm somewhat on the fence of, you know, trying to figure out how to address it. But, you know, when you have existing development that's at about forty percent, this is exactly where that, you know, that would be right about at that forty percent. So the board may consider amending the allowable impervious coverage in RLC to be more consistent with existing development because twenty-five percent is low when you do have, again, it's just the nature of the use because medical office and professional office requires one parking stall per hundred and fifty feet. It's an intense parking requirement.
Is there a way of change to that? I, I don't, I don't like that we recommend all of these extra parking spaces that are not necessary and we end up with asphalt all over the place. You know, or, or pavers or, or whatever's going in there.
So medical office is tricky. I mean, again, I believe, I, I have to find out, I want to find out where the recommendation for the one per one fifty come from. I would imagine it probably comes from like I T E, you know, like traffic engineer recommended guidelines.
Would you say that's where it comes from?
Most likely, yeah. That's in line, I believe, with what I T E's recommendations are. And that's a national average and recommendation for stalls per square footage or whatever unit you want to use to establish that.
So medical office, I mean, again, it just, it, it's based on averages. It's based on a certain standard. There are busier medical offices and there are offices that are not as busy. For example, there was a, forgot the intersection, there's a medical office on the, it's on the corner of Roanoke and one of the side streets. It was an old, it was like an old single practitioner. It recently went over to another medical care, you know, a medical provider. Didn't change the size of the building, but the practice is now much busier. So now people are parking on the street to go to that use. So I, I'm not necessarily, you know, it, it's kind of a tough situation to go and just change the code for medical when there might be med, you know, medical practices and offices that need that parking. There might be some that don't. I think it's really sort of that average of, you don't want to underpark a site. You don't want to develop a building when, and then get yourself into an issue where you don't have the parking for those patients.
Well, we would be willing to land bank spaces in order to keep it green instead of paving it.
I mean, they could do that. I mean, if they, if they, you know, if they were to land bank this section here, I mean, they would keep it along the, the frontage with Main Road.
Yeah, this is for handicap though, so that's the only problem is that you gotta keep, I think you have to keep these here. I think maybe perhaps land banking this year. And there are projects that you've worked on over the years that we've worked on where the board landed back spaces and, and you have to do a covenant restriction that if the town board or the planning board finds that the need for parking is there, you can trigger it and then the property owner has to build it out.
They would, so the code requires that the applicant provide a minimum of two-thirds of the required parking. So if we were to explore land banking, they would need to provide sixty-six parking stalls. I mean, that, that's something that the town board in considering a special permit and the planning board can consider. I would have no objection to land banking. And again, if they find out, whether it's, you know, the provider there finds they need more parking or the board finds that there's a problem, they can build that out.
How many doctors offices do they anticipate building out?
They don't even have a tenant or any, anybody in mind, just because we've been in this process for, we're, we're like the third design team on board here. So we started by other design professionals, other representation. But no, there, there aren't any tenants that are.
So there are five suites being proposed. Justin, can we just zoom out a little bit on this plan? So there's five, five tenant suites being proposed. The largest being fifty-six hundred and then the other guys being two thousand square, about two thousand square feet. I mean, again, this does, you know, whether these walls are broken down, you know, whether it's three tenants, four tenants, it doesn't change. You're not adding to the size of the building. You're just changing the, you know.
I'm just thinking, if you cut it down to sixty-six spaces and you've got five different tenants there, you're talking between employees and patients, you know, little more than ten spaces per office. If you have three or four employees in each office, doesn't leave a lot of parking for patients to come in.
I mean, I'm, I'm not saying they have to go, that, that's the minimum number. I mean, they could, they could have removed that bank that had thirteen. So I mean, they could provide eighty-five, you know, if they got down to eighty-five or whatever that number is. I was just referencing what the code says in terms of the minimum that has to be provided for the land banking.
You have a voice from the peanut gallery. Sorry, Greg. So to Joanne's point, we could consider an amendment. I'm not going to say we're gonna do it, but what other towns do, especially with a high demand like this, we consider maybe a higher per square footage amount, but have an employee, a dedicated employee count, like a certain number of spaces per employee and then square footage space as well. So you kind of capture both angles. I know it's tough if you don't have, you know, an end user there, but it could make it closer to a real number.
I'm just concerned because it's not, you know, a, a dense commercial area.
But I think it's worthy of a discussion, maybe a code revision to look at our requirements. I know we kind of talk about it not enough, but I'll work on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we hear the same complaints with the shopping centers up on fifty-eight. But a lot of those centers also, which people don't keep in mind is that there's availability for a pad site to go in there. So that parking could possibly be needed at some point in time.
All right, so in terms of building aesthetics, we did provide elevations. RLC does have requirements for types of building materials, aesthetics. This application proposes cedar rainscreens, cedar tongue and groove natural siding, ephes along the northern ends of the southern elevation of the building. Freight will have the cedar siding, the five and a half inch tongue and groove, so it'll have, you know, more of a rural character. So they do comply with the aesthetic guidelines for the RLC. with the aesthetic guidelines for the RLC zoning district.
One thing that I'm going to ask is, when the planning board, the planning department gets, um, the renderings of what the building is going to look like, and what materials they're going to use, I know a lot of times, sometimes it, it goes outside of what's actually listed that they're going to, to use. It's so important that the end product looks like what was presented in the beginning. And I don't know if there's an actual follow-up before CO is issued, that they're looking at whether or not it looks like the planning board approved it to look like. Um, you know, it kind of seems variations.
So, we, we do, we do follow up. There was actually a, the gas station out in Calverton, uh, right before twenty-five eight branches off, uh, they came in before the planning board several years ago for site, uh, administrative site plan, and they were gonna propose, they had approved building elevations. When I went out to do my final inspection for that prior to the issuance of a CO, found that the elevations did not match what was approved, so they have to, they're resubmitting to.
Okay, good.
So, we, we do follow up.
The intention in your resolution put down.
They're resubmitting that stuff now.
Uh, yeah, I mean, they're in a, they-
They're operating.
No, they're not. That, that gas station's dead. It's fenced, that site's fenced off, and they're not, I don't believe.
You're talking about the one on the corner on the, uh, that side?
Right across the street from the planes. Yeah. No, they're pumping gas yesterday. I drove by it. They're open.
That's news to me.
They're not supposed to be.
Well, they are.
All right. We'll, we'll follow up on that. I mean, that's news to me, but I went, I last went out there, probably.
Something in the water up in that area, with people doing what they wanna do.
But in your resolution, though, when the, when the board approves that you put as elevations by.
Yeah, I mean, we reference on any, any site plan resolution, we reference, you know, approving the site plan, dated such and such, we list the sheets, elevations, rendering, and such, you know, we, those are recited in the, any approvals that are granted. Uh, so, next step for this application, I do, I can prepare a resolution for the board, recommend, assuming lead agency issuing a negative declaration, as the traffic impacts would be mitigated by the installation of that signal, I'm recommending moving this forward to public hearing.
I would support that.
I, I would too.
I like the, that they listened to us about the design of it, and going from the two-story to the one-story, and setting it up this way, I think it will blend in nicely down there with what's on the already, uh, Nefus Stipe, where that building, and I think that sits in pretty good in there. And, uh, I like this.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, I'll have, I'll draft the resolution, and if the board's okay, I'll add that to the packet for the meeting next week, and we'll get a date.
I'm sorry.
Just write us a thing.
It's almost impossible to fold them back onto anything.
No, we're gonna have to take it out of the business unit. Thank you.
Two weeks, so I don't have to tell them next week. Okay. You too. Yep. No problem. Okay. We are, uh, we have on the open session for matters surrounding an update on boards and committees, but I think we're gonna postpone that until the next work session. Um, we have board members that have other engagements not too far from now, and we still have a fair amount to do. So, we're gonna postpone, Devin, the, uh, the updates on the boards and committees, and we'll do that at our next available, uh, work session, okay? So, that brings us up to resolutions.
Can I just talk about the process of the resolution? So, as we all know, last month, last town board meeting, it was extremely confusing, um, with changes going from work sessions to board meetings. So, I was hoping that when we put a resolution in like today, as they're entered in, can't we just immediately assign them numbers? And then, even if a resolution is, is, is removed, if resolution number ten is removed, it goes from nine to eleven, we can ask about ten. But just assigning them numbers and keeping them, and excuse, makes it easier. I think it's better public perception to look at it and find out, like, if, when, especially after like today, when resolutions are continually added to the packet, the next meeting, you can see, okay, we stopped at fifteen, and now we've added sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and we keep them in chronological order. And if we decide to pull one, it's okay, we'll just, okay, number ten's not being read today, here's an example. I'm just finding it like a little too confusing, that things are just being added to packet, removed from the packet, and then, like, I just think, if we can assign numbers, I don't know what anybody else's thoughts are, to keep things in sequence as they go in, and as we change them.
That's a question above my pay grade only, because I don't understand fully how Minitrack works, and I know there are a lot of issues with it right now, and there's another one today that we've gotta deal with possibly, but, uh-
Yeah, so, I think the councilman brings up a good point. I know it's, it sometimes can be a little confusing. I think we would need to certainly consult with the folks in the town clerk's office, because they are sort of quarterbacking the Minitrack process and the agenda. So, I certainly wouldn't wanna do anything to make life harder on their end, but certainly I understand the intent, which is to try to streamline the process.
As anybody drops one in from any department, it's immediately assigned a number, and it stays with that number. And if it never comes to fruition, the number is simply not used, but it just keeps it in chronological order as things are added into the packet.
Well, I think part of the problem, the practical problem, is that there's two numbering systems. So, the system that you see before you, these are numbered for today only. You'll notice from the-
Well, that's just that. But I'm talking about physically on the resolution. If this is, if this is resolution number ten, I'm using as an example, it always stays there. If you decide to pull it, well, number ten is not in the packet.
Right, but it's ten today, but then, big picture wise, they, they keep track of the resolutions numerically throughout the whole year. So, you notice it's twenty-twenty-four dash, you know, two sixty-three.
But it's okay for me to say twenty-twenty-four dash zero-ten was never, never discussed, it was pulled from the packet.
Yeah, so, I understand what you're saying in concept.
But it's there, and then if you come back to it, or you revisit it, a month later, you wanna bring it back in, you just go back and you say, I'm revisiting number ten. But you keep them in sequence, as any department adds a resolution, they're kept in sequence. I just think it's for public perception. Like, last month, eh, last meeting, it was like, things are being added before some of the resolutions, then others are being added after the resolution. They're all, the numbers are different in chronological order, let's.
That was a one-time era that I think the town clerk has addressed since.
Yeah, so, that was a separate issue, but as I say, big picture wise, I understand where you're coming from with that, and we can certainly chat with the town clerk and the, uh, the folks in the clerk's office about it. Maybe a, a way we can try to do this differently. But I know, a- as I say, I know the numbering system that they give us today is different than the numbering system that'll be in place for sort of archival purposes going forward online, so that ten years from now, you can pull up a resolution. It's twenty, it's, it's from the calendar year, so it's twenty-twenty-four dash. All right. So, um, but, but certainly we can look at it. We're always open to trying to streamline and make things better for everybody, so no problem there. All right, so if the board's ready, we'll jump into.
I just want a quick segue, just for transparency.
Yes.
I forgot my packet upstairs, so I have it on my phone. I'm not looking at text messages.
I do as well.
Well, I'm, okay.
Let me see, Joanne?
There you go.
The odds on that horse are ten to one? Wow.
We have an extra packet here if anybody needs. All right, so, resolution number one, sewer district capital project number eight-two-three-one-seven, budget adjustment. Number two, water district capital project eight-two-three-oh-three, budget adjustment. Resolution number three, ambulance district fund balance transfer. Number four, approves the attendance of one police department employee to attend a seminar. Number five, approves the attendance of one police department employee to attend the DCG, DCJS Public Safety Symposium. Number six, appoints new seasonal beach employees to the recreation department. Number seven, appoints a seasonal recreation aide to the recreation department. Number eight, appoints a call-in recreation specialist to the recreation department.
That's not what mine says.
Mine doesn't say that either.
Mine says appoint seasonal staff.
Uh, did I miss eight? I'm sorry.
Staff to recreation department.
Okay, so, number eight, appoint seasonal staff to the recreation department.
Yes.
Number nine, appoints call-in recreation specialist to the recreation department.
Correct.
And number ten does the same thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Points a call-in recreation specialist to the recreation department. Number eleven, appoints Brian Mills to service as chairman of the Board of Assessment Review. Number twelve, ratifies the appointment of seasonal staff to the recreation department. Number thirteen, reappoints member to the Small Business Advisory Committee, Castronova. Number fourteen, reappoints members to the Small Business Advisory Committee. Number fifteen, accepts the resignation of an account clerk. Number sixteen, waives fee for use of Showmobile for Townscape Summer Stage Concerts at Town, at Town Square. Number seventeen, approves fireworks application for Jamesport Fire Department, July twenty, twenty twenty-four.
Summer's here.
Number eighteen, approves fireworks application for Riverhead Bidma, July fifth, twenty twenty-four. Number nineteen, approves special event chapter two-fifty-five application for Hallackville Museum Farn Barn-Raising Supper. Number twenty, awards bid for food and meat products. Number twenty-one, extends bid for disposal of town-generated construction and demolition material. Number twenty-two, extends bid nonparton for lubricants. Number twenty-three, extends bid for auto parts. Number twenty-four, extends bid for disposal and recycling of municipal solid waste. Number twenty-five, approves agreement between Tana Riverhead and Windship Media LLC utilizing parking, police personnel, and police cars, twenty twenty-four Jazz in the Vines. Number twenty-six, authorizes the town attorney to execute an agreement with Municipal Valuation Services, Inc. The board will recall, this is the second piece of it. You guys previously approved the twenty-three, twenty-four, this is for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Correct.
Number twenty-seven, bond resolution of the Tana Riverhead, New York, adopted July second, twenty twenty-four, appropriating two million, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. Just to clarify for the board, you recall, we had, uh, adopted this at a special. We had three board members present for that. It came to our attention thereafter that we needed to have actually four of you present, so we're just going to essentially redo the same thing. Hopefully, we'll have.
Do the three that were here have to come back, or just the?
It would be great if you could, if you could, for that, that would be great. Number twenty-eight, authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to consider a local law to men, chapter three-oh-one of the Riverhead Town Code, entitled Zoning and Land Development, section two-forty thereof, entitled Bed and Breakfast Facilities. Number twenty-nine, authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to amend, chapter two-fifty-seven, peddling and soliciting. Number thirty, authorize town clerk to publish and post notice to consider a local law, two men, chapter two-fifty-one of the Riverhead Town Code, entitled Noise, Public Nuisances, and Property Maintenance, section seven thereof, entitled Variances. Number thirty-one, adopts local law, two men, chapter three-oh-one, zoning and land development, part two, districts, article, not too sure, Pine Barrens Overlay District. Number thirty-two, ratify the amendment of fees for accelerated building department services related to use permits. Number thirty-three, order establishing lateral water main extension at two-oh-three dash two-thirteen East Main Street, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six-hundred, dash one-twenty-nine dash one, dash seventeen through twenty, Riverhead, New York. Number thirty-four, declares certain sewer district equipment obsolete, surplus property, and authorizes auction of obsolete surplus, surplus sewer district equipment. Number thirty-five, approves fireworks applic- application for the Rock Golf Club, July fifth, twenty twenty-four. Number thirty-six, provisionally appoints a code enforcement officer. Number thirty-seven, pays the bills. And then, to the councilman's point, additional, um, challenges with Minitrack and the, the system that we have in place, uh, but that we're in the process of, of replacing, um, numbers, uh, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty are listed below. Uh, Minitrack just did something we had never seen before and grouped them separately, but the town clerk's office will remedy that by Tuesday. So, we'll call those thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty, even though they're listed separately as one, two, and three. Number one, which is number thirty-eight, Riverhead Sewer District Capital Project eight-two-two-two-six, budget adjustment. Number thirty-nine, budget transfer veterans Memorial Park Parking Lot, Capital Project Number seven-two-three-zero-six. And number forty, amends town board resolution twenty-twenty-one dash four-eight-one. And I think, uh, Jeanette is here, financial administrator, she's just gonna clarify those last couple of resolutions. Speak to them, Margaret.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, these were our three late resolutions, I apologize. Uh, the first one is just to, um, transfer some excess funds in a sewer district project that Michael Reichel had mentioned is almost complete, so he will not be utilizing forty-one thousand, five-hundred from the Cranberry Street Subcollection System Capital Project. And those were transferred originally from the American Rescue Plan Act. So, we are freeing up money for ARPA to apply to one of the following projects, which is the sanitary system. It's not supposed to be parking lot, so I have somebody amending this in time for the board meeting, but that project number is correct. It's supposed to be for the sanitary system, though, not the parking lot. Um, and the forty-one-five will go towards that, which was previously slated for fund balance. And instead of fund balance, for another resolution, which is the number forty, or the last resolution, um, the forty-one thousand, five-hundred that's, um, now being utilized, um, since, for ARPA, for the sanitary system, is now going to free up fund balance money for another older resolution, uh, twenty-twenty-one four-eight-one, which was never recorded as a budget adjustment. Um, so, we are amending that resolution, um, and using fund balance instead of, um, ARPA monies for that, uh, because those are design fees associated with an ongoing project, so I probably wouldn't qualify for ARPA, so we'll use fund balance for that one instead. So, that's kind of the link between all three resolutions. Does anybody have any questions?
How's the new office?
It's nice, thank you. That was an easy question.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeanette. Okay, this concludes our open session. In a moment, I'm gonna ask to close it and move to go to executive session, where we will be discussing personnel items, matters surrounding a possible change in status of an employee, that's with me, matters surrounding disciplinary matter of an employee, that's with Howard and Marshak, and legal matters, legal advice on rules and procedures from Howard and Prudente. So, can I have a motion to close the open session?
So.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to accept it, to close the open meeting, and we will go to executive session. Everybody have a great weekend. And, oh, congratulations to, um, any of our high school graduates. I think, uh, graduation is this weekend. So, congratulations to all those who are graduating high school. I think we can all, well, maybe Bob can't, but most of us can remember back to when we graduated from high school. Um, and, uh, best of luck to everybody. And whatever your future endeavors, college, or workforce, whatever it may be, the best of luck for you. Have a great weekend, everybody.
Take care.